Good evening. I am Dr. Erin Spence, Superintendent of Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and I am calling this School Board Annual Organizational Meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 12th day of January 2021. I'm serving as Chair Pro Tem in accordance with School Board Bylaw 1-37 until a Chair is elected this evening. Pursuant to the state emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on www.vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. This time, I'd ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role and announce School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Dr. Spence. In School Board chambers, we have Ms. Hughes, Ms. Owens, Ms. Manning, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Felton, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Rye, Ms. Weems, Ms. Holtz, and attending via Zoom is Ms. Franklin and Ms. Melnick.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will now proceed to describe the nomination and voting procedure for the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Board. Any School Board member may nominate a candidate for Chair. A nomination does not require a second. Any School Board member making a nomination may discuss his or her nomination at that time. Other School Board members will be allowed to discuss that nomination, make another nomination, or make other comments concerning any of the nominations. School Board members are requested to keep comments under five minutes. School Board members who have not yet spoken during a round of voting have the right to comment or make a nomination before a School Board member who has already spoken during that round of voting has had the opportunity to speak a subsequent time. After a School Board member has made comments or nomination, I'll ask if there are any other nominations for Chair. When no further nominations are made, I'll call for final discussion of the candidates, and without any further discussion, I'll then close the nominations. The following voting procedures will be used for the Chair and Vice Chair positions. Because the School Board is unable to use the electronic voting board due to the seating restrictions required for health protocols at this time, the voting procedures will be done in the following manner. All candidates for Chair will choose a colored marker provided by the Clerk, and the order of choosing will be alphabetical. The Board Clerk will announce each nominee for Chair, and the color assigned to that nominee for the round of voting. School Board members present in chambers will then hold up the color of the nominee that member is voting for, and School Board members participating remotely will be asked by the Board Clerk to name the nominee they're voting for. The Board Clerk will announce the votes for each nominee. As a reminder, extension votes are not allowed during the voting for Chair and Vice Chair. When there is only one candidate, the colored marker will not be used, and each School Board member will raise their hand for an aye or a nay vote. It will be necessary for a nominated candidate to receive a majority vote of those School Board members present to be elected Chair, so we will repeat the voting as many times as necessary to obtain a majority vote for one candidate, and that same procedure will apply if there is a tie vote. After each round of voting, School Board members may nominate additional candidates if no candidate receives a majority vote during the prior round. When repeated balloting becomes necessary, candidates nominated remain under consideration unless their nominations are withdrawn by the nominator or the candidate. When one candidate receives a majority vote of those School Board members present, I will declare that candidate. The Chair and the duly-elected Chair will then conduct the remainder of the business on the agenda. Please note, Board members, that you will not change seating assignments at tonight's meeting due to the logistics and reprogramming of the electronic systems. School Board members will have new seating assignments beginning at the next Board meeting. Are there any objections, motions, or questions concerning this procedure? Hearing none, I proceed to call for nominations for Chair. Ms. Riggs.
I'd like to nominate Carolyn Rye for Chair. Do I need to speak to it now?
You may speak to that now. Yes, ma'am.
I think Carolyn has done a good job this past year as our Chair. I'd like to see her continue in this position, to continue the consistency in the structure that, a little bit of structure we've been able to have in our school system this year. So I think it would be a good reason, one of the good reasons, to continue her serving as Chair. I think she's done a good job in answering very carefully and very consistently to emails and questions from our constituents throughout the year. She's very active with what she needs to be, needs to do as the Chair, being at whatever event she could be at in person this year, and being involved in, doing it in a professional way. When speaking on the dais and speaking in her email, she's been very professional and very consistent and very informative. So I think she's done a good job.
Are there other comments on that nomination or other nominations? Ms. Manning.
I would like to nominate Ms. Carolyn Weems. She has been an esteemed member of this Board for a while, and she has great knowledge of the division and how it operates. She has great relationships with our local and state leaders. She seeks to unify all parties, and she also really values different, differing opinions and wants to hear from all sides. So for those reasons, I think she would make a great School Board Chair.
Are there any comments on any of the nominations or other nominations for Chair? Okay, hearing none, then I'm going to close the call for nominations. So as a reminder, at this time, the Board Clerk will ask each of the nominees for the Chair position to select a colored marker, and we'll do so alphabetically, so we'll begin with Mrs. Rye, followed by Mrs. Weems. Madam Clerk, if you could announce the candidates for Chair and the color assigned to that nominee for this first round of voting.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. For Chair, in red color is Ms. Weems, and yellow is Ms. Rye.
So I'll just repeat that one more time. Mrs. Weems' color is red, Mrs. Rye's color is yellow. As a reminder, in chamber, you'd hold up the color of the candidate that you are voting for, and then we'll ask for a named vote from our members who are participating online. Any questions about that before I call for the vote? Okay, we'll call for the vote. So in chamber, if you could hold up the color and just please keep it up while the Clerk tallies the vote.
Ms. Melnick, can you verbally state who you are voting for?
Yes, I vote for Mrs. Rye.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin, can you please verbally announce who you are voting for?
Yes, I also vote for Ms. Rye.
Thank you. The voting is as follows. Eight votes for Mrs. Rye for School Board Chair, three votes for Mrs. Weems as School Board Chair.
Congratulations, Mrs. Rye. The Board has voted for you to serve again as Chair. I'm going to return the gavel to you, and you'll conduct the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you to my colleagues. I don't have any prepared remarks other than to say I will, I'm here to represent each one of you as well as each and every constituent, and we are a community of many opinions, and it starts here at the foot of our School Board, and just, it's a new year and a clean slate, and we'll continue to show this community that we can work collectively on behalf of the children of this city. So thank you again for this honor and your confidence. Okay, back to the script. The second order of business is the election of Vice Chair. The School Board will follow a similar election procedure for Vice Chair that it followed for the election of the Chair. Any School Board member may nominate a candidate for Vice Chair and may discuss his or her nomination at the time. I will now call for nominations for Vice Chair. Mrs. Anderson.
I nominate Mrs. Kim Melnick for Vice Chair. I think she's done a good job, and I also think this is a good time to continue our leadership, as we've had a rough year, and I think we need to continue with the leadership that we've been going with for this past year. Thank you.
I'm not sure if you can hear me, Carolyn, Ms. Rye?
Yes, sure can, Mrs. Franklin. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to nominate Carolyn Weems for Vice Chair. I was lucky enough to chat with Dan Edwards over the course of this week, and, you know, because he can give an educated but impartial at this point vote, you know, I do believe that Carolyn has provided a lot of great leadership. She is the highest, you know, tenured person at this point, now that Dan has gone, and he believes that, you know, she would bring strong leadership to the Board, and, you know, and that she deserves to have an opportunity, and I would also agree with that, having gotten to know her over the last couple of weeks. And so I would like to nominate Carolyn Weems for Vice Chair. I think she's deserving, and she is certainly knowledgeable enough to take that position.
Thank you. Would either one like to speak to either nomination?
I would just like to share, because Mrs. Melnick and I have been your leadership team for this past year. She uses the term "wingman," I guess very appropriate for the daughter of a renowned and beloved Navy captain, and has, without fail, has the best interests of this school division and the teachers and students at heart, struggles like we all do with some tough decisions. But I just, I do want to thank her for her past leadership and would support the chance to continue having her work alongside me for, you know, representing all of you and being there to support all of you in whatever way.
Any other comments before we proceed? So hearing no further nominations or discussion, I will now call for votes on the nominations for, we need to, I guess, Madam Clerk, can we ask you to pick for?
Ms. Melnick, since you are not here to pull a color, may I ask that Ms. Kami Lanetti pull your color?
Certainly.
Thank you. Ms. Weems is yellow, Ms. Melnick is green. And if you are ready, please hold up your cards for the vote for Chair. Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
I will vote for myself.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
For Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Chairwoman Rye, we have four votes for Ms. Weems and one, seven votes for Ms. Melnick. So Ms. Melnick is now Vice Chair.
Well, congratulations, Mrs. Melnick. Do you care to share any, do you have any comments to share?
Just thank you. Thank you to my colleagues. I appreciate it. I enjoy being Carolyn's wingman, so, and I'll look forward to it again this year. Thank you.
I'd like to just say, Kim, congratulations. Carolyn, congratulations. This is Carolyn Weems. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Weems, for your service, and look forward to continue working together in this next year. Lots of good work to happen. All right, we are still in our organization meeting, and the next order of business by state code is appointment of Clerk and Deputy Clerk. So we have before us that the School Board approve, asking for a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation to appoint Regina Toniato as Clerk of the School Board and Susan Kype as Deputy Clerk of the School Board for the 2021 calendar year.
I'm so moved.
Mrs. Manning and Mrs., a motion, thank you, and a second, Mrs. Riggs, discussion. Mrs. Manning.
I would just like to say that Ms. Toniato, I'm just so thankful for her. She was thrown into a situation that was very difficult to manage, and being new to the position, she has done a very wonderful job with Grace, and for Ms. Kype for also, you know, helping her as she has come on board as well. Thank you all very much. You make a good team.
Mrs. Williams?
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you, Regina and Susan. Y'all are awesome, and like Ms. Manning said, you were thrown in this at just a crazy time, and you are so helpful. Susan, you're so great with helping us with our different meetings, and especially the budget meeting that several of us are on, and I just thank you so much. We are very, very, very lucky to have these two women working with us and for us. They do everything. They keep us out of trouble. They keep our schedule straight, and y'all have a thankless job, but we're here tonight saying thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well said. Mrs. Anderson.
And I reiterate all of those comments that have just been made in a very difficult year. We started out the year, you know, we thought everything was going to be just, just great, and then all of a sudden, March 13th happened, and Regina, you have just been there for us, and you not only stepped up, but you have brought us through this crazy year, past year, and let's hope that the next year brings us some, some good luck and lower, lower transmission rates.
Ms. Owens.
I won't believe her that point, but I will say that since I've been on the Board, it's rare that every Board member has something that we all agree on so thoroughly, and so I would just say that it's very appreciated, and despite our differences on the Board, the fact that every Board member feels completely supported and comfortable with both the service of yourself and Ms. Kype speaks volumes, and you guys are awesome. Thanks.
And I'll just add that as a new Chair and a new Clerk, we worked through a lot together, and just thank you. So with that, please show your affirmation with approval with a raised hand.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Congratulations, ladies. All right, School Board Committee Assignment Review. The only, the announcement for tonight is that Mrs. Melnick and that I, we will send out the list of positions that are open by virtue of the recent election, and this is the time, too, to ask any, any members who wish to step down presently from anything they are serving on, if you could let me know and the Clerk in the next 48 hours. And because, I'm sorry, oh, I skipped the standing rules? Thank you. All right. Another standard order of business for the organizational meeting, the standing rules review, which is Appendix B. It's part of the Bylaws section technically, and some of these do get revised during the year, but absent any specific one to come before us tonight, the, we would just typically affirm this as collectively correct, Madam Attorney.
Kami, put the microphone on.
All right. You amended this. The PRC brought it to you in the fall, and you've already amended that recently. This is what sets up the structure, what your agenda looks like, and we moved some of the things that had been in there before, like the annual organizational meeting and the awards. You've seen those move into the other Bylaws. That was, that was the appendix that you amended. So you've recently amended, so unless you have any changes, those will remain your standing roles. Also, the standing roles are the, is it Appendix B is, yes, is your, sorry, that is your agenda. You approved that, I want to say it's October 2020, so you've recently looked at that.
So is this something that requires a vote tonight?
Yeah. You do need to affirm it. If you do not affirm it or take any action, the ones that are currently in effect remain in effect. However, you have recently looked at this. If you're familiar, if you take a look at them, you have seen them recently, because we passed them through Policy Review Committee in the fall. Usually, you just reaffirm, take a vote to reaffirm, and adopt them again.
All right. Any question on that, further question before I ask for a motion? All right, motion to approve the standing rules. Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Felton. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, please show your affirmation with a raised hand, please.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. So back to the committee assignments, putting out a, say, that we will put out a list of available positions through, through June, and then you will also let me know anybody if there's anybody who wants to step off of anything at this time, like six months before the, the next review, which would be July 1. So any questions on that, Mrs. Manning?
When did you say the deadline is to provide feedback to you?
Probably by the end, it would be pretty quickly, by the end of the week.
By Friday?
That would, that would work out well, so that, because the goal, the goal here is to have this as an action item for January 26th, so we just, we will try to move as efficiently as possible.
Okay, so we just use the document that you, that we had at the last meeting, or has that changed?
That, that's a good resource, but I can also confirm it in email, so we're all on the same page with the open positions, and again, with the caveat that there might be a few more, depending on who I hear from.
Okay, so you'll put out something, and then we'll get it back to you by Friday? Okay, thank you.
And the schedule of meetings, which was presented for, as information back in December, and Madam Clerk has provided again, if you do need to take another look at it, we are affirming the dates through June, and then really voting for the first time on, again, these are School Board meeting dates, just to clarify for the public. This is not the school calendar. Yes, it is, it is in the packet. Anybody need a moment to take a look again, where possible, and for the most part, it's the second and fourth Tuesday, and the typical deviations are the, are budget season, so those are all noted for February, and with a special vote, the, why should be looking at it, too? So affirming the two columns, the affirmation column is the left column, and that's through the end of this school year, and that includes, the, the red notations are any Tuesday that's not your second or fourth Tuesday. So the February 2nd special meeting for the Superintendent Estimate of Needs presentation, the extra meeting that were held as a placeholder, February 16th for budget if needed, and then the March 2nd special meeting for adoption of the budget. So, and so that is according to past precedent. And then the proposed schedule of meetings in the right column includes the retreat date, and again, going through November, the second, second and fourth Tuesdays, December's two dates are adjusted to, to squeeze in two dates in December, and actually, too, you'll see that even with that, December 7th, there is still a two-week gap from November 23rd to December 2nd, so that satisfied a few things there. And then again, we jump into budget season for, for 2022 with, with the same extra dates set aside for the CION, the extra budget meeting in between, so that would be the third Tuesday and the, the special meeting in March. I'll add the extra caveat, note that the June dates are subject to graduation, and this here in particular, Dr. Spence, I checked the website, and not to put anybody on the spot, but are those dates, they're not firmed up right? I just want to say that if the, either, if the first meeting-
We have a hold on the dates with the Convention Center. Obviously, too early to make a decision about whether or not we can proceed at the Convention Center with the graduation, but we do have a hold on, on the dates, and the dates themselves are predicated on it being Convention Center-driven. Obviously, if that were to change, we would have to announce new dates to School Board- announce new dates, school by school, as we did last year. So that's the best answer I have for you at the moment.
Sure. And so if there was any need to change that June eighth date, if it should?
We would, we would let you know.
Sure. We'll have plenty of notice on that to the public as well. So with that, any other que, any questions or comments on this? Why, we should first ask for a motion and a second, and then open up for discussion. So a motion to approve, Mrs. Manning, second, Mrs. Anderson. So questions or discussion? And are two members of remote, any questions on this?
No.
No.
All right. Then with that, if you would show your approval with a raised hand, please.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. So that, that wraps up organizational matters. Uh, Madam Clerk, just confirming, no recognitions this evening, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that leads to adoption of agenda. And many of us have had informal discussions tonight. But being aware of, of the volume of, of, of public speakers, we're doing our best to condense this agenda where possible. And any business that could be deferred, and staff has been consulted, and appropriate committee chairs were applicable. So I am making a motion with regard to the adoption of the agenda, asking for a motion to adopt it with the following revision.
Mrs. Vai, if I can just clarify your motion, make sure we're consistent with your bylaws. You're making a motion to suspend Appendix B, which was the standing rules that you just reaffirmed. You're, you're going to make a motion to suspend tonight the order of business in Appendix B and amend it, and then go forward and finish saying how you're going to amend it.
Okay, so I'm asking for a motion to suspend Appendix B and, and change the order of the agenda?
And you're going to explain how you do it. Because it is a bylaw, because you adopted as part of your bylaws, you're going to require a two-thirds vote to do it because there was no prior notice. So you need a two-thirds vote tonight to make that clarifying. But just want to make sure your procedure is correct, is that you were making a motion to, to suspend Appendix B, the order of business, and you were going to amend this agenda? And if you can finish how you're going to amend it.
So now let me get my train of thought back. Thank you. So all that said, the change, the recommended change, change is to, is to defer all of information to the January twenty-sixth meeting. And this is with the approval, the textbook sections, the new courses and textbook adoptions, teaching and learning, and the superintendent have approved that. And policy review committee recommendations, our chair, Mrs. Riggs, has approved that. So sure, or we can say standing committee reports, right, with the, chairs can email if there's any significant update. Okay, so while we're at that. Now.
Will you be switching the order at all? Will you continue on with your?
And the other request, I believe, was for consent to be placed ahead of.
Hearing of citizens and delegations on agenda.
Ahead of hearing of citizens. Or in be, I'm sorry, in be, in between.
I think if, if I'm correct, what you had stated earlier was your intent was you will defer items twelve and thirteen to the January twenty-sixth meeting. You will then move up the consent item, and it will actually split your hearing on delegations of agenda items. That in-person speakers will be heard first under number nine. When the in-person speakers are concluded, you will then take the consent agenda. There'll be items A and B. And then you will return to the remote hearing of citizens and delegations on agenda items, and then pick up the rest of the agenda.
Yes. Mrs. Mann.
Uh, you, you said all policy recommendations, or are we still going to vote on action items?
Action was going to stay where, where is right now. Oh, I'm sorry. No, that too. You're, okay, yes, I beg your pardon.
You're taking the policy review committee recommendations, eleven, items eleven, B one and two will be removed. Are you taking up the personnel report tonight?
That we will, yes.
Okay, so you'll just be, so let me, let's go back and clarify. The motion is to suspend Appendix B, the order of business tonight. You will amend your current agenda to defer items twelve and thirteen to the January twenty-sixth meeting. You will further amend your agenda to take up number nine as the hearing of citizen delegation with in-person speakers first. You will suspend it. You will then pick up the consent agenda. Uh, and then you will, when consent agenda is completed, then you will pick up, are you taking everything else away? And, I'm sorry, once, once the consent agenda is done, you will return to the hearing of citizens delegations, uh, the agenda items, which will be your remote speakers. And then you will return to the agenda as amended after that.
Which would be the two action items, the personnel report, and then our plan.
I'm sorry. And we, oh, sorry, defer, we also defer eleven, B one and two, will also go to January twenty-sixth.
Yes.
A lot of procedural stuff.
So do we have a motion to approve as amended? Mrs. Riggs, a second. Mrs. Anderson. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, please show approval with raised hand.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote to make the changes accordingly on the agenda.
Thank you all. Okay, superintendent report, Ms. Dr. Spence. That we did not defer.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. So we do have a few items of interest for you and our families to know. First, we begin with two informational items. As a reminder to staff and families, this Monday, January the eighteenth, the division will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. And as always, the full division calendar is available on vbschools.com. Second, we know that juggling the responsibilities of home and school during this pandemic continues to be challenging. And we want to be as flexible as possible when it comes to providing opportunities for your child. And that's why we're pleased to extend the application deadline to January the eighteenth for all high school academy programs, as well as the advanced technology center and the plaza middle year programs. The deadline for gifted cluster programs, grade two through eight, and the old donation school program, intellectual program for grades two through seven, has also been extended to January the eighteenth. In addition, the technical and career education center will be offering a virtual open house covering its program offerings on February third. And program information for the environmental studies program and its application process can be found by visiting vbschools.com. What our hope is, is that this will give our families a little more time to explore the remarkable options that are offered through our academies and other programs. Please contact your child's counselor if you have specific questions or need further assistance. Now, I do think that in the midst of the many challenges that we're dealing with, it is important that we also acknowledge the good and positive things that are happening in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So I'd like to do that for just a moment, starting off with Diamond Springs Elementary School. Right before our winter break began, Diamond Springs Elementary School's principal, Brandon Lugo, and assistant principal, Dr. Karen Drossino, has held a live YouTube book reading and literacy event for their students and families. Before the event, all Diamond Springs students were provided with a copy of the book, The Day You Begin. And during the event, Mr. Lugo read that book to all of their students as they followed along at home. And after the reading, Dr. Drossino shared reading strategies and tips for students and families to assist with literacy success. So we just want to thank them for their creative approach to literacy prior to the holidays. Each winter before the holidays are upon us, Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers work, as you probably know, to identify students whose families are in need and are not being assisted through other avenues. These hardworking staff members make sure that students, these students and their siblings receive support through the division's Holiday Connection Program, which links children with school and community sponsors to meet those needs. This year, the Holiday Connection Program delivered gifts, clothes, blankets, hygiene kits, and gift cards directly to three hundred and fifty student homes, helping to make the holidays a little brighter. And in addition, thanks to a ten thousand dollar gift from the Hanson Family Foundation to the Virginia Beach Education Foundation, our school's social workers will continue to be able to give grocery and department store gift cards to families as needs arise in the next several months. For more information about being a sponsor for next year's Holiday Connection Program, email holidayconnectionvb@gmail.com. And we want to thank everyone who helped to make those holidays a little brighter for division families in need. And finally, a shout out to Chef Brittany Garcia from Green Run High School. She's been turning up the heat with her virtual Zoom culinary lessons, while her advanced culinary arts students are showing off their cooking skills virtually as well. Her virtual cooking lessons have included two guest presenters from the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore. In the past, the Food Bank has partnered with Green Run for pop-up farmers markets in our school's parking lot. But this is the first time the nonprofit has worked with the local high school for live online lessons that combine cooking and nutrition. Students voted on what they wanted to prepare during the lessons, and Garcia and the Food Bank worked with a grocery service that delivered ingredients to students' doorsteps, thanks to federal funding from the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families Program. So we want to thank Chef Garcia and everyone at Green Run High School for their support with this exciting and innovative virtual lesson. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. It's always good to see all the good work that still continues behind, behind the scenes. So approval of meeting minutes. Uh, we will start with the December fifteenth regular school board meeting. Uh, is there a motion to approve? Or first, I'm sorry, any changes to the minutes? Okay, so motion to approve. Mrs. Felton and a second, Ms. Owens, any discussion? Okay, please show your affirmation with a raised hand.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. So um, Madam Chair, we have ten votes yes, and Ms. Manning abstaining since she was not at the meeting. And also, please note, the special session that was on January fifth will be part of the agenda on the January twenty-sixth meeting. So you will be approving two minutes from the fifth and from tonight's meeting on the twenty-sixth.
All right, thank you for that notation. Okay. So the minutes are approved. We did vote yes?
Yes, and it did, it was passed with ten yeses and one abstention from Ms. Manning.
All right, so that leads us into the hearing of citizens on, on agenda items. And we know we have some waiting here on site. Uh, the school board will now hear comments on agenda items from citizens and delegations who signed up with our clerk prior to this meeting. In-person speakers will be called first, followed by speakers participating through Zoom. And, and Zoom speakers who are on now, please note that we are squeezing in a few short matters in between, but it, we promise it will be brief. It's, it's not necess, uh, let's see, each speaker has four minutes to present, and will be given a thirty-minute, thirty-second warning before time expires. Once that time has expired, we ask that the speaker stop making remarks, and the next will be cued to speak. Well, that again is with regard to Zoom. So uh, please keep in mind, the school board invites the public to also submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you, and, and my committee, my colleagues know that we do have the list of speakers from Madam Clerk. So would you kindly introduce our first speaker of the evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker is Tracy Leekid.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Congratulations, new leaders. Um, thank you all again for your, um, oh, sorry. Thank you all again for your hard work during this time. Um, I'm here to help advocate for our Black and Brown students, our, our students of color, African-American, Hispanic, Asian-American, those of multi-ethnic backgrounds. They seem to be an odd footnote in this whole narrative that VBCPS School Board and Admin has been telling. Um, I've been in communication with a teacher, a science teacher, and she really articulated so well what I felt was missing, but I didn't know because, because I just didn't know. And she was telling me and us, those who are organizing for tonight, that she has students that are Zooming and calling, emailing her from, um, the hospital, from ERs, because they have caregivers, grandparents who are, you know, who have been infected, who have died. Her children are scared. You know, they, they are afraid. Their families don't have good information. They're afraid of the vaccine. I mean, many are anyways. But this is a story nationally. Good Morning America had a story about how barber shops are a part of the outreach efforts to dispel the bad information about, um, the vaccine. So, okay. I don't know, I'm kind of losing my train of thought. But I'm here to help advocate for these kids and to raise her voice, her fears. Her heart is breaking for her kids. And it is a story that is missing. You know, I've been watching in a part of this, I'm a person of color. You know, I work at a great, awesome school. We do have some brown kids. But it's, I don't see the stories that she was telling and imploring. So I was so happy that over the weekend, I heard her, I felt her, I felt the gravity and the weight of her students and families. So Virginia Beach has, I didn't know this until I looked, and someone had mentioned it, the population is close to fifty percent non-white. That is not the Virginia Beach I grew up in, but that was, you know, however many years ago. So these communities of color are hard, most hard-hit, brown, black. I'm Filipino-American. I, in October, I told you that nurses across the nation, or the Filipino nurses across the nation, although it's a small population, they're the largest death. So I ask you to...
Thirty seconds?
To please think of these Black and Brown communities. This is not a trauma-informed pedagogy approach that we're taking. We are not doing that. That is a VDOE directive. It's a guideline. We need to be trauma-informed. Thank you. And um, this teacher of, this teacher draws the line. We draw the line. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colleen Clementston.
Welcome. Hi, Happy New Year. I wanted to start off by saying Happy New Year. Um, and I hope you all, we all have a better twenty twenty-one than we did twenty twenty. Um, I got a little wrench in what I was going to say tonight, but I'm going to keep saying what I have to say. I was here last time. I wanted to come in as a positive person, because that's who I am. As an educator, I was always trying to look for the positive way, the productive way, the proactive way, the compromising way. That's how I was brought up, that you work with the people in your community, you work with who you know, and try to bring about change in a positive manner. I don't want to blame people. I don't want to point fingers because it is just, it's, it's done. It's not going to solve any issues. I understand from the teachers that want to be virtual, and parents that are virtual, I understand their fears. I understand their concerns. I get it. I respect your opinion. I respect your concerns. What I'm asking now from everyone, from teachers, from the community, is to respect my decision. On social media, one of probably the worst places ever. On social media, one of probably the worst places ever, I have been positive with people, showing them their respect, but unfortunately, for those of the opposing view, they have not shown me the same respect. And I'm trying to understand it because I understand its emotions. This is a hard time. I understand that Dr. Lindsay doesn't feel that we should go back to school. She feels that, you know, February 1st was a good starting point. But I'm concerned that that's not going to be a hard day. I'm concerned that for my students and for other students in the community, that you're going to continue to move the goalposts, that it's going to be, okay, the teachers didn't get enough vaccines, and it's going to be, okay, we're still not enough vaccinated. Now, ooh, now the students need to be vaccinated. Ooh, now we need this, now we need this. And now it's the end of the school year, and what happened to the year? If the goal of certain entities and certain people is to keep us out of the school for a year, then they need to come out and say it and just be brave enough to say, look, we don't want to go back at all. We want to wait till the fall and start. That's not okay for me. But if that's what their vision is, instead of trying to hide behind, you know, excuses, 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 that is what we need. I have tried to work very hard. I've tried to be a proactive parent in this district. I'm a former educator. My kids are lucky. Their mom's a teacher, a former teacher. I know how to instruct them. While my son's in sixth grade, I don't know how to instruct him, but because of his disability, he's in the step program, so I can still teach him math. I can still teach my daughter fourth-grade math and reading and writing because that's what I did. But for many kids, you can't. For many kids with special needs, like my son, or children who have even more severe disabilities, they cannot get the help sometimes at home because their parents just don't know what to do. There are some days that I don't know what to do. Last Tuesday, for example, I had to email my son's teachers because I had the meltdown. I had the breaking point. My son and I were in a screaming match because he just couldn't understand that, guess what? The North didn't want slavery, the South did. He couldn't get it in his head because in his mind, he has always been taught from the age that he started school at three, and now he's 11. Home is your safe place. Home is home.
30 seconds?
School is where he can, he learns, and that's when he has to control his behavior. Home is his safe spot. He can let it go. So I'm asking you, for all the children out there that are having issues mentally, socially, academically, please just consider a compromising way. As a sub, I would happily go in and take the spot of a virtual teacher to do in-person support learning and in-support behavior, and a teacher could teach virtually. If we can get enough subs--
And that is time.
We can do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Becky Hay.
Welcome.
Somebody left their phone here. I don't know. Anyway, okay. Sorry. Despite Dr. Spence's capricious and weak-kneed capitulation in the last 24 hours, I'm going to move forward with the statement I prepared coming into tonight because I think it still applies. Originally, I came here and tonight in full support of the original recommendations proposed by Dr. Spence, his team, and the panel of medical providers working closely with the district. The recommendations are the right decision moving forward for our district, and as was detailed the past couple of meetings, students are falling behind academically and suffering emotionally. I'm not here to present more statistics or data as the panel and the administration has already done so. For months now, our students have been waiting to realize their choice to return for in-person instruction, and as they wait, they've been wondering, why is it that they can go to work, go to Walmart, Target, or the mall, go to restaurants, go to youth group, go to the gym, go to play sports, go to trampoline parks and other entertainment venues, but they can't go to school? Dr. Spence has previously given the board, gave the board opportunity to act responsibly tonight and in the best interests of our students. It's my hope that members of this board don't consider, don't continue to squander this opportunity by choosing the fear-driven demands or loyalty to a professional organization they are members of over what they've clearly been, has been demonstrated as best for students. The past several months, many of you have wanted to follow the science. However, when the science was presented the last few meetings, some of you balked and stated it wasn't the right science because it didn't fit with your narrative. Mrs. Anderson, in the last meeting, you stated you were not disrespecting the expertise of our panel, but then you argued for several minutes that what they presented, with what they presented, and attempted to delegitimize their data and their professional opinions. Mrs. Owens, you're an advocate for our vulnerable student populations, and yet, as the data is presented at the last meeting showed, many of these populations are falling behind in reading and math, and longer students are forced to stay virtual. Mrs. Holtz, at the last meeting, you expressed an astounding comment that students interacting with each other in class in a mass three feet apart is less socialization than being on a screen. That is completely out of touch and ridiculous. Even our youngest learners think that's strange and inaccurate. Members of the board, you cannot throw free breakfast, lunch, and dinner at our students when they are drowning in isolation and academic frustration and call it good. I am begging you to do the right thing, even if it goes against your echo chamber. When you vote, you need to be thinking about the student at home that is struggling with isolation and loneliness. You need to think about the student with academic anxiety in the virtual learning setting. Think about the student with working parents that aren't home to support them during the day, the student athlete, the student with autism, the student with learning challenges, the student with technology challenges, the single mom trying to decide whether she should put food on the table or assist her children with virtual learning, the teachers who desperately want to return face-to-face, but they are being told to stay silent out of consideration for their coworkers who prefer virtual. The data has been presented by several community and national experts. Schools all over the nation have implemented a safe return to in-person instruction since last fall. We are behind the curve by every stretch of the imagination. It has been incredibly disturbing hearing from members of the VBDA and the Virginia Beach Educators United on social media this week. Members are calling for boycotts and sick outs against the district, taunting that Virginia Beach won't fire them because the district needs them more than they need us. This breaks my heart as a parent and angers me as a community member. Fortunately, I was told last week that the VBDA's membership has been declining over this issue because of its staunch opposition to the return to face-to-face instruction. I am thankful that most teachers do not hold this view and have a student-focused purpose. My hope and prayer tonight is--
And that is time.
--that each of you shares that first, that same perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Denise Willard.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. As educators, you know that words matter. A school board member in Alexandria, Virginia, a Ms. Margaret Lorber, when asked if students should return to school, said, and I quote, "Do you want your children to be alive or to be educated?" Words matter. As we make decisions to allow parents the choice, with an emphasis on choice, for face-to-face learning, let us consider two lists of words, those that are important and have a bearing on this decision, and those that do not. I'd like to start with the latter. They include politics, unions, fear, fear-mongering, feelings, hypotheticals, and the vaccine. Those that matter are words like suicide, abuse, depression, anxiety, and loneliness, parental stress, transmission rates, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control, and from the letter of 9 January, which I understand was sent to the board and to Dr. Spence, the names Ramirez, Brixie, Colley, Fink, Fraser, Kapoor, Leder, Maples, Moore, Mullen, Smith, and Strauss, excellent medical professionals who are in support of going back to school face-to-face learning. And finally, there's private school. It's been brought to my attention through shared emails that two board members are interested to wait for a vaccine until it's available for staff for students to go back to school. One board member, I understand, has stated that her decision was to vote no and stated that prior to this hearing. She went on to say to a concerned parent that the parent's comments were, quote, "A disregard for the safety of our professional educators." I'd like to make two points on that. The first is, if board members' minds are made up in advance and parental concerns are made light of, why are we here? And two, please, if we wait for a vaccine to be widely distributed, our children will not go back to school this year. In summary, data shows that teachers have a higher chance of contracting this virus at Walgreens or in their own homes and in the classroom. And Dr. Spence, while asking for a slight face-to-face delay today in light of updated information, recognizes and supports the need for children to be back in the classroom. Your school board core value statement opens with, "Put students first." Please, I beseech you, it's time to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Harris.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Spence and board members. First, I would like to sincerely thank you, Dr. Spence, for recognizing the need to revisit the plan that was put in place over the summer for our children based on the limited data that was available at that time. The potential your latest recommendation has to offer my daughter and others like her has brought tears of hope to my eyes, and I am here tonight in support of your recommendation to return option one students to face-to-face learning. As a medical professional, I could spend my limited time reiterating the ever-growing pile of data you have all seen from the medical community that provides overwhelming evidence that in-person learning is safe for both students and staff. Instead, I will talk about my observations of my own child over the last nine months in hopes of inspiring you to make the right choice for our children. My 17-year-old daughter is a senior at Salem High School in the Performing Arts Academy. She has spoken here before you in two past occasions, and we have both written to you on more than one occasion. Sadly, the response we received was minimal. The fact that some members are unable to respond to me is fine, but when you cannot respond to a child, that speaks volumes to her. My daughter has close to a 4.0 GPA, and she has been one of those students that works extremely hard to get those grades. She has challenged herself by taking difficult classes, and she has persevered through some incredibly difficult times in high school. She is not an athlete, but she is a performing artist, and for some reason, she has the impression that she does not matter to you or to the Virginia Beach school system. Nine months ago, on the Friday that schools were shut down, her ring dance was canceled on the very next day. Her dress, shoes, jewelry, and purse are still hanging up in our bonus room for her to look at every single day. The following week, the first-ever Salem High School Show Choir concert that she started with a friend. She auditioned the students, acquired the music, choreographed, made the costumes, held the rehearsals. That, too, was also canceled after all that work, but she picked up and moved on because senior year was right around the corner, and that was exciting. Do you remember your senior year? I remember it very fondly, and it brings so much joy to my heart to have those fond memories. Have you been to a class reunion? Do you keep in contact with your classmates? Imagine looking forward to your senior year for more years than you can remember and having it all taken away from you for no legitimate reason. Imagine having an idea of the dress you'd like to wear to your prom or hearing your name called as you walk across the stage or seeing the caps thrown up in the air with your classmates as you celebrate. My daughter has lost hope for any of this. Is she depressed? You bet she is. What should be the most exciting year of her life has led to more disappointment than we have time to discuss here today. Thankfully, she has two parents that are very involved in her life. We check in with her multiple times a day. We spend time with her in the evening, but some days, it's not enough. She seems sad and very disappointed. I see her becoming more and more lonely every day.
30 seconds?
Losing human interaction has had a deep effect on my child, and I'm devastated that I can't make this better for her, but you can. School's not just a building to them, it's a community. You can bring back normalcy. What about no child left behind? There are a lot of children left behind, and if you think you can make up for that this summer or next year, you can't with my child. She gets one chance. Please be a human, a parent, an educator.
And that is time.
Put them back in school where they belong. Some of their lives may depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pamela Wittem.
Welcome. Thank you so much. I hope you guys have a good night so far. It continues. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. Since schools closed in March of 2020, there has been an air of superiority radiating from certain school board members and that they know what's better for my son than I do. Recently, certain members of the VBDA have also added to the superiority complex surrounding the education of our children, which puts parents who rely on the public education system in a complex holding pattern with no end in sight that support face-to-face instruction. Certainly, when the virus first broke, there was no data to refer to for guidance, but recent updates, some as recent as last week, sent to aspire our school superintendent, show that it is possible and safe to return students, teachers, and staff to in-school instruction. What's happening now is a vicious cycle of distrust, disgust, and anger. While I am sure it is not intended, there is now an us-versus-them mentality, which leaves the parents facing off not only with certain school board members, but members of the VBDA in hopes of returning their children to face-to-face instruction. Parents and their children wanting face-to-face instruction are being wildly ignored to satisfy a group of teachers not wanting to return to in-person learning, when last year, an overwhelming majority of teachers and parents voiced their approval to return to school while not having a-- educating our children to be the future leaders of our nation matters, which makes schools essential. Even after many have been back in the classroom only to be yanked back out again when the metrics go into the red, it has been proven that going back to face-to-face instruction can be done with mitigation strategies. My son and many others in the public education system have an IEP. Our family's biggest lifeline to education has been his access to speech therapy. Yet because of his on-and-off-again instruction with in-person learning, where he excels best at, his speech is no longer progressing. A recent progress report from his speech teacher said the following. His willingness to participate in speech therapy decreased, impacting the use of his words to respond and comment during structured language activities. In previous progress reports, we had positive trends towards reaching his IEP for his goal in speech. Now we are stagnant. Our children, unfortunately, are being used as political pawns in this debate surrounding face-to-face instruction. Last month, a friend of mine who also has a child with special needs informed me that their child was asked by their special needs educated, education teacher to attend a rally in support of virtual-only instruction. A morally indefensible special needs teacher took it upon themselves and who knows how many others to try and exploit a child with special needs, all in the name of politics. I know that I am not alone when I say my child, a student in the Virginia Beach school system, is struggling. In a world where parents expect a fair access to education, my son and many others who are struggling are not being offered a fair access to education. Virtual education might work for some, but not all, and that is not fair to those that
30 seconds?
--this type of environment is not working for. The current metrics being used by the board is putting a burden on the working parents, which make a majority of the children in the public school system. The board cannot keep asking working parents and their employers to adjust their operations for an outrageous measurement tool that does not adequately measure school transmission. It is a shame and embarrassment that the Virginia Beach Public School Systems cannot open up to the students they serve, yet private schools--
And that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Chair, I was notified that Speaker number seven has opted to do us via Zoom. Speaker number eight and nine are not, have not shown up, so we're going to Speaker number 10, Brittany Lee Bradwaite. No, nine is here? Okay. I take that back, so now we're doing Speaker number nine, Thomas Konant.
Welcome.
Thank you, that's Konant. Lauren Hodges, in a National Public Radio article, wrote the following. For American families and their children, school is more than just a building. It is a social life, a community, an athletic center, and a place to get meals that aren't available at home. The coronavirus pandemic has disrupted and continues to disrupt the lives of U.S. students in profound ways. And then she noted that nearly 3 million children nationwide have reasons, have for reasons like lack of-- reasons like lack of internet access, disabilities, and language barriers, literally dropped out of any form of school learning since last March. That's scary. But I believe there's another segment of our student population that has chosen to forego further schooling due to the sheer futility they face. My granddaughter spent nearly three years studying, practicing, singing, and bonding with the various chorus groups in the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem High School. She, with her friends and peers, worked diligently to grow in experience and ability, watching others promote into the top-performing chorus groups, which now neither she nor her friends will ever get to experience. For the past year, they've been shut out of in-person instruction, practice, and performing. In December, she, along with many of her friends in the senior class, opted to take early graduation and leave school. She never would have considered this if she could still actively participate in chorus. She told me on Sunday, there's no reason to continue. Unable to fulfill her goal in high school makes high school meaningless. This is happening to seniors all over our city. The American Academy of Pediatrics president on January 5th this year wrote, Children absolutely need to return to in-school learning for their healthy development and well-being. A January 8, 2021, American Journal of Pediatric Study that examined many school districts in North Carolina concludes, Our data indicate that schools can reopen safely if they develop and adhere to specific prevention policies. And Dr. Spence wrote, Most importantly, children bear the cost of school closures, and many will be harmed permanently. Virtual learning is not able to fill the place of in-person learning for most students. He said, This crisis is so glaringly obvious that it is arguable that school closures should be considered the greatest health emergency facing children right now. And then he said, There's no evidence to suggest that students or staff are at any increased risk in school than they are in other part of society. The question, therefore, he said, should not be whether or not schools should be open, but how to stay open safely. A retired teacher wrote, I retired several years ago after thirty years of teaching in VBCPS. Many of my friends taught in the same system. We have all agreed that we would never have refused to teach under the current challenging circumstances, with the safeguards that are in place for teachers and students. Teachers chose their vocation to make a difference in children's lives. To best achieve this, teachers need to be face-to-face in the classrooms with their students. We've been enriched by the youngsters along the way and have lifetime memories we will never forget. Students will visit us after college and tell us they chose the teaching profession because of our dedication and guidance. Because of these things and many, many other things you've heard tonight, I stand tonight to urge the board to open our schools, open them safely, but open them for face-to-face learning now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brittany Lee Bradwaite.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you for having me. I come tonight to discuss quite a few things, but first, I just want to do a little introduction of myself. I'm a former teacher. I also have two kids in the city school system, and I also work in public health. So I'm kind of all across the board with what's going on right now. And I want to assure you that there are days where I want to take my children, drop them off in front of their school, and pray someone's there to take them, because this has been a very, very long ten months for everybody. And as much as I know that the virtual school option doesn't work for everybody, if we're thinking about being safe, and we're thinking about keeping the community safe, Virginia Beach safe, I think we need to take a hard look at the way that we reopen schools. I did get the email today about Dr. Spence's proposal and changes to his plan, and honestly, I was a bit relieved from the public health aspect, because we are overwhelmed at the Health Department right now. We cannot keep up with the number of cases. I work seven days a week, and I cannot get ahead. And I don't know too many medical or public health professionals at this moment that would say, hey, you know what? It would be a great idea to send kids back to school right now. To be completely honest, I don't see that Virginia Beach right now can handle that. I'm all for kids going back to school, and especially the ones that really need to be in-person, the English as thick language learners, the, you know, special education students that need that interaction and need to be with their teachers. I totally understand that, and I'm all for that. My concern is just that implementing other grades past that, it becomes very hard to track and contact trace and case investigate the more that we have in the building. So I think at this point, I would have to say that I almost find it a little unfair to reopen schools and not give teachers the option to be vaccinated first. It's kind of like sending healthcare workers into long-term care facilities to administer the vaccine without allowing them to get vaccinated first. This is a public health emergency. The economy, the education department, nothing can go back to the way that it needs to go until we get control of the virus. And the one thing that we cannot mitigate is human behavior. That's the problem here. We can wash our hands all we want, we can disinfect all we want, we can social distance all we want, we can do all of the things, and guess what? COVID is still here, and we have higher cases today, we have higher percent positivity today in the state and in the city of Virginia Beach than we've had since the beginning of this pandemic when it started. So my question is, if we have all of these mitigations, we have all of these strategies, and we're still prepared, why isn't it working? Because of human behavior, because we can control what happens in the school walls, and that's great, but we can't control what the students and families do outside of the school walls. So that becomes the problem, is that administration...
Thirty seconds.
Administration can do the best they can inside the school, and I have no doubt that that's exactly what they want to do. I feel like my children are in great hands when they go to school. I believe the teachers want the best, I believe that they do their best, but at the end of the day, we are not in a position right now to take on the burden, and I don't know that three weeks from now is going to look much different. We have prediction models that say what it's going to look like, but at the end of the day, people have to be willing to do the right thing.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Giselle Vasquez Falls.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Rye, members of the board, Dr. Spence. Thank you for your, this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Giselle Vasquez Falls, and I'm a VBCPS secondary teacher, and I'm here to ask you to vote to continue to use the metrics set in place in the fall and to return students, staff, and teachers face-to-face only when it is safe, for all involved, based on CDC guidelines. This is my twenty-fourth year teaching in Virginia Beach. I'm a department chair, instructional leadership team member, I'm a national board certified teacher, I have my master's degree, former teacher of the year, and a new member of the VBEA. I tell you this because I love my job. I love my students, and I can't imagine doing anything else until recently. Like many of my colleagues, I've had enough. I'm angry when I hear some board members and members of the community, community talk about teachers not wanting to work or having it easy. We've never worked harder to engage students, create meaningful lessons, and learn new ways of doing our jobs. I've worked my entire career to be the best teacher that I can be, and I get to know my students. Why is this important? Because several board members cite student mental health issues as the reason that we need to get back into the building. Teachers have been doing the work of psychologists for years. This is not new to COVID-19. If you're truly worried about mental health issues, then why doesn't staffing reflect this? Last year, we had one psychologist per nearly two thousand students with limited student access. The premise of mental health as the number one reason for returning is just invalid. According to the Polaris Teen Center, mental health, mental illness is common in teenagers. One in five kids between the ages of twelve and eighteen suffer from at least one mental health disorder, but less than fifty percent of them are receiving treatment. Again, I say this is not new to COVID-19. Focus on how to help our students look at the whole picture. In my advisory class last week, the group of students I work with for social, social and emotional learning, I asked this question. What have you learned about yourself during this time that makes you feel proud, and how might this help you to overcome future challenges? In this class of twenty-eight students, mostly ninth and tenth graders, three students admitted to having been diagnosed with anxiety and/or depression. Not surprising, as I see that in normal school years. But let me share some of the responses from the students, and I quote, Although my circumstances may not be as severe as others, it does not make my feelings any less valid. I can be good at anything if I put my mind to it, if I practice enough. I've done a lot of painting and drawing and making jewelry, which will make me learn how to not give up. I've learned to be a little less dependent on a lot of people. And finally, during quarantine, I learned how to control my stress and how to be able to love myself even more. So rather than sending students, staff, and teachers back into unsafe conditions, consider creating after-school mental health programs.
Thirty seconds.
Virtual counseling sessions with school counselors and psychologists. In-person instruction does not mean students will be able to engage with each other. The CDC recently stated that opening schools can be safe, but only if there's a low incidence of community spread. VB is at the highest level of community spread since March. If your goal is to improve the quality of education and improve students' mental health while protecting staff and students, concentrate on mental health programs. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mathias Paul Tellkamp.
Welcome.
Welcome. Hello, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and administration. I want to ask that we stick to the metrics. We have a vaccine that is just rolling out, and teachers in Virginia Beach are not getting vaccinated yet. This is going to put them in danger, and I stand by them. They want to hear that you, as a board, also stand with them, and if you do anything short of rejecting the frivolous plan, then you are enabling a toxic work environment, and I would expect that every teacher that values their life to call in sick and if forced to return, is turning their resignation. We all know that teachers are not getting paid a fair wage for the work that they perform, yet here we are, and they are being asked to sacrifice more for the benefit of the community, and this is appalling. And I wholeheartedly reject this train of thought. This is not chess. They are not pawns to be sacrificed for a win. I think that it is important that we ask why you are making this decision, that should be done by the Health Department. Spence is cherry picking his facts to fit his narrative, and we need to have medical professionals giving guidance on when it is safe, and it needs to be made public why this is happening. Is he quivering in his boots over a lawsuit, or what? I have little faith in someone that is willing to change the numbers to get the result they want, and under his guidance, no students in the building. We have had approximately twenty reported cases since November, when students were back. You cannot even keep the cases from happening with no students in the building? You really believe that you can do it by bringing hundreds of students back and teachers back in the classroom? That is response, that is irresponsible, ill-advised thinking, and I hope that you reject giving him the sole authority for the decisions. Have all the filtration systems been updated to reduce the spread in every school? No. Has all the PPP, PPE available for everyone? No. Is there a realistic transportation plan? No. Crossing your fingers and hoping for the best is not a plan, Spence. Our hospitals are reaching capacity, and hospital staff is struggling to hold it all together. We do not want to have more people sent to the hospital because little Johnny or Suzie came home asymptomatic, got a parent, grandparent, or relative sick, and their system is compromised. Someone on the board needs to stand up and say enough is enough and put a motion to kill this. Then, we need to have a motion to stay virtual until every teacher can get the vaccine. Then, we can have option one students back. It is previously, it has been previously requested to have an anonymous system for teachers to report information to the school administration and the board, and I'm wondering if this has ever been taken up or if it's just ignored and forgotten. I know teachers are crying over the abusive behavior that they are having to experience, and if it were me, I would walk away. I did not take the abusive behavior from previous employers, and I would not want them to do it either. Teachers have committed to teaching because they love what they are doing, but this is a relationship that cannot be one-sided, and you must start acting like you are an equal part of the equation and treat them with respect, and let their voices be heard. We need to stick to the metrics.
Thirty seconds.
And we need to stop having the same repetitive discussion every month. Please let the madness end, and someone have the audacity to make the motion that will end this monthly charade that is emotionally draining for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kendra.
Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent and school board members. As a parent of a child that has a low immune system, I do not feel it is safe for students to return to, back to school. I put trust and faith into the school board to protect my child, as I would protect yours as my own. I am not feeling that the oath that you take and that you have taken upon being elected is within the ethical and moral values of the safe and well-being of yours or you. My question to you is, excuse me.
Take your time.
My question to you is, have you conducted a thorough and lengthy walkthrough of a full day within the shoes of our faculty and staff? Have you conducted a thorough walkthrough of our clinics, our cafeterias, our special education and CSEP rooms, our PT, our OT, our speech therapist rooms, and let us not forget the gymnasiums? Yes, this will take more than one visit when it comes time to deciding what is best for our children and the future of this county. We should be making sure that it is by any means necessary. Even if the walkthroughs take eight hours, five days a week, we have time to actually pay attention and listen to what they have to say. Let us focus on them and the safety of their and our future. I believe that learning starts from home. These accusations of teachers not doing their jobs must come to an end. These teachers are working twenty-four-seven to provide information within the standards of the curriculum while also trying to make it as captivating as possible. At the same time, they are trying to troubleshoot the systems and make home deliveries with necessary supplies, all while conducting one-on-one tutoring over Zoom. Our kids are not in private schools. The administration, from my understanding, does not have the financial ability to maintain a safe and sterile environment at ease, and this is by supplies, PPE, as well as extra faculty and staff members to roam the hallways. I ask each person on this board, please pull up your sleeves, get on your sneakers, and work one-on-one with individuals within every department of all schools, all grade levels, to not only hear the words that are coming out their mouths, but actually to listen to what they have to say and understand their needs in order to succeed during this pandemic. I personally believe that if kids can be attentive to playing video games, if they can be attentive to being on YouTube channels, if they can be attentive doing all these Snapchats, they can be attentive to being in classrooms on Zoom. It's a choice that they make. It's in growing up, you have to learn what choices are important, what choices are beneficial. I support, and I stand with the teachers, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Speaker number fourteen is not here, so we'll go to Speaker fifteen, Casey Whiteman.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name's Casey Whiteman, and I am a sixth-grade teacher here in Virginia Beach. I want to start off by saying thank you for the jobs that you do, regardless of your decisions, someone is going to be angry, so I appreciate the effort that you are putting in. I had to write my thoughts down because speaking in front of adults is a bit more intimidating than sixth graders. I realize that things have changed. I realize that things have changed a bit with the email that Dr. Spence sent out this afternoon, but still wanted to share about my current life situation, considering I and many others could be in the same position in a few weeks. I know that this is personal to me, but I feel it needs to be shared because I know multiple teachers that are in very similar situations. My husband is in the Navy and has been deployed since September. We have two sons, a two-year-old and a five-month-old. At the beginning of the school year, when we were presented with our choices for face-to-face first virtual learning, I had just given birth to our youngest child. My husband and I had long conversations about which option I was going to choose. We looked at the health metrics that were given to us. We involved our daycare provider in these conversations as both of our children attended in-home daycare, and we wanted to ensure that she was comfortable with the decision that I made. After these long conversations, I decided to opt for face-to-face learning. I chose that option for a couple reasons, the first being that I knew that I could go into the building and not feeling an overwhelming crush of anxiety for my health and the health of the people that I love. I knew what to expect. I also chose that option because the thought of my students being left in limbo and shuffled around from different teachers made my heart break. Living in a pandemic, children, my own included, rely on consistency. I couldn't bear the thought of being the factor, being that person that caused that inconsistency in the lives of my students. I didn't want them to feel like I was leaving them behind, so when sixth-grade students returned to school, I did so without complaint and with confidence, and I was at ease. However, last week when the board met and proposed the plan to forego the health metrics that were provided to us and send us to school when we are in red-red, my heart sank. I went to drop my boys off at daycare and was informed by my childcare provider that if we returned to face-to-face learning, that she would be closing, and then that was when my heart plummeted. My husband's deployed, both of our families live in the Midwest, so what am I going to do? At the same time, how can I blame her? We had open discussions at the beginning of the year. We decided together what we both felt comfortable with, and the back and forth, it's not fair to either of us. It needs to be a set decision, and we, as teachers, made a set decision at the beginning of the year. Even though a proposed plan was sent out this afternoon during our classes, the issue that I have is that teachers are not being asked our input, we're not being given a choice. We made our choice at the beginning of the year, and we cannot change it. We have to stick with it. And even though the date has been pushed back, our situation remains the same if we go back when it's red-red. On top of that, I'm going to feel like crushing anxiety walking into the building. I'm going to be reading my kids a book before bedtime, wondering if I was exposed that day and could be putting them at risk. I'm not going to cry in front of you, that'd be really embarrassing. I'm going to be thinking about my friends in healthcare that are exhausted, that are struggling mentally and physically, that are literally lining beds up in the hallways to handle the influx of patients they are receiving. I'm not ashamed to admit that I'm also struggling with my own mental health. I'm the type of person that constantly puts the needs of others before my own, and I don't want this to come across as I don't want to go back to face-to-face learning because I absolutely do, and I love my job, and it's so cheesy, but I was made to be a teacher, it's what I was meant to do, I love it.
Thirty seconds.
But right now, it isn't that time. If you're going to alter the reopening plan, please, please, please wait until those of us that want to be vaccinated have the opportunity to do so. Please take into the consideration the mental health of the staff in this district. If we, as teachers, have to remain consistent within our classrooms, please have the same expectations of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peter Kimball.
Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jeff Kimball, and I'm the father of an eighth-grade Option 1 student at Old Donation School. The effects of this pandemic on my child's education have motivated me to act. I've engaged in learning as much as I can about the board's role in COVID-related policymaking. I found last week's board meeting and the research brief emailed on Thursday extremely informative. I would like to acknowledge the professional courage of Dr. Spence in proposing significant changes to his own return-to-school plan based on new and compelling data. He listened to the science and shifted his rudder accordingly. I strongly support his January plan, as the supporting data is overwhelming. Several months ago, I rationalized why several of you voted in support of the return-to-school fall plan. You were supporting your superintendent, your general in this war, the captain of your ship. Now, the man you tapped to lead your troops has told you that a change in strategy is required to win this war. Simply stated, more is known because of the new data, and that demands a change in strategy. I could base my argument tonight on anecdotal tidbits regarding remote learning, such as my child's new tendency to be socially withdrawn, or her profound learning loss in math due to the four-by-four block schedule, or the true stories of three families I personally know who have experienced a suicide attempt, a threat of suicide, and actual self-harm by their respective children who are learning remotely. Fortunately, I don't have to, thanks to the science contained in the research brief. Thirty-two pages of data, analysis, and citations, all supporting a return to in-person learning. A bundle of evidence put together by the team of physicians that you, the board, asked for advice. Their consent is unanimous that our children are safer in school. Hopefully, you all by now have read the brief and absorbed its impactful message. During last week's meeting, several board members used the words "I feel" and "it seems to me." Board members, this is no time to use your intuition in making your decision whether or not to adopt this January plan. You are the jury, and this is the evidence. As essential workers, teachers themselves should be emboldened by the science in this brief. Returning teachers to their classrooms should be strongly encouraged, as well as lauded in the same way we have praised other essential workers. For teachers, in returning to the classroom, will be helping society in a time when they are needed most. With mitigation procedures in place, that return can be done safely. Through mitigation based on science, teachers are safer in the classroom than they are in Kroger. Board members, the evidence is in the data. The recommendations are unanimous from your health professionals. No one is asking you to make a perfect choice.
Thirty seconds.
Only a better choice. In summary, less screen time, not more. Socializing, not suicide. Sports, not seclusion. Mitigation, not missed opportunity. Please acknowledge the science in this new data by voting in favor of the January plan. Thank you for your service and for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Tellkamp.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board and school administration. My name is Elizabeth Tellkamp, and I have been attending Virginia Beach City Public Schools for the past seven years. It is my understanding that you are considering returning students to school amidst the COVID-19 pandemic. Voting to do so would be a blatant abuse of your power as school board members and a betrayal of the students that you swore to protect. You earned your position on the board because the citizens of Virginia Beach entrusted you to care and provide for their children. By sending students back to school, you are not only putting us in danger, but our parents, guardians, and family members as well. Immuno-compromised individuals are more likely to catch COVID-19 and lose their battle with the deadly virus. Keep in mind that an immunocompromised individual could be a pregnant woman, an individual with a heart or lung disease, an elderly individual, or an individual with a pre-existing condition that affects the heart or lungs, such as asthma. By these standards, a large sector of the Virginia Beach population is likely immunocompromised. Though the COVID-19 death rate is relatively low, more than 4,000 people are dying in the United States every day. If you reopen schools, cases will spike and deaths will spike in return. It is important to note that as of today, the Virginia Department of Health is reporting 1,205 new cases in the eastern region every day. Cases are rising, and if you make the frankly idiotic decision to reopen schools, the resulting deaths will be your fault. Speaking as a child who lost her mother at 11 years old, it is heartbreaking to lose a parent. I am forever changed due to my loss. People will die if you choose to reopen schools. Children's lives will be destroyed if you send us back in these conditions. If you choose to betray the students you swore to protect, they will fall ill and many of them will die. You need to realize that the blood of those dead children will be on your hands. I yield the remainder of my time.
Our next speaker is Donald Schultz.
Good evening, members of the-
Welcome.
Good evening, sorry. Members of the board, Dr. Spence, and staff. I'm glad to be before you again, and I appreciate all the hard work you do on behalf of our children. As you're aware, your primary role as a school board, your primary function is the education of our children. And in determining what I was going to say this evening, I couldn't come up with anything better than or more relevant than the report that Dr. Spence disseminated last week. And I will read from page nine, very small excerpts that really get at what you're here to do tonight. Data indicates that schools do not drive the spread of COVID-19, especially when other aspects of the community are open, such as in Virginia currently. In schools internationally, across the country, and locally, evidence indicates that in-school transmission of COVID-19 is low when schools implement strong mitigation strategies. Additionally, there's no evidence, no evidence, to suggest that students or staff are at any increased risk in school than they are in any other part of society. Not my words, the report's words. Except perhaps in total isolation. I don't even think if these were my words, I would say that. The question, therefore, should be not whether or not schools should be open, but how to stay open safely. That is the only question that remains after a full summer and spring and early winter of this pandemic. The next paragraph. Given the past success of the VB CPS with mitigation strategies, collaboration with the VDH on contract tracing, and the monitoring for in-class transmission data and guidance support the reopening of VB CPS schools for in-person instruction for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. Again, the report's words, not mine. While, in the end, the report ends as follows. While acknowledging the gravity of the pandemic, we must not allow children to needlessly suffer lasting harm without any benefit to their families or their community. The report's words, not mine. I just have one question. In light of the report that you all have read and have discussed and will be discussing, how could you look a child in the eye and tell them that they will have schools closed to them one day more than absolutely necessary? I doubt you could do that with our next speaker, but I leave that to you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rory Baker.
Hello.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. My name is Rory Baker. I'm in fourth grade at Rattle Island Elementary, and we have met before. I would like to say I would rather wear a mask for six hours and 30 minutes instead of virtual learning. I know COVID is deadly, but while I was back in school, there were no cases. Please send us back.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Baker.
Welcome.
Good evening. Sorry, let me organize here. Thank you, Dr. Spence and board, for taking your time during these unique times. I'm here tonight to say thank you for creating new school metrics as opposed to community metrics. My children attending face-to-face should not include prisoners and nursing home patients as the Fall 2020 Back-to-School Plan stated. Thank you for putting together a wonderful 32-page document explaining the current data and science behind school metrics. Thousands of schools are opened across the U.S. using school metrics, including DC, which opened some schools yesterday for face-to-face among a citywide shutdown, or Missouri that had one of the worst community outbreaks this fall, where schools stayed open and no deaths were reported. I felt safe when sending my fourth grader and ninth grader to the classroom this fall with all the safety mitigations in place. They included two kids per table at lunch, hand washing and sanitizing stations all day, no sharing of supplies, sidewalk chalk at playground time, no one in the hallway, no, oh, excuse me, one way in the hallways, no congregating in the hallways, and the library cart, I think the public library drive-through. With these extra mitigations added under this new plan, those that should return should be allowed to do so according to the dates given. Yes, I am scared to death of getting COVID as the sole adult living with my children currently, but my children's mental health outweighs my fears. One of my teens is involved in theater, and anxiety about her grades and getting into college or university before COVID were really high. You can only imagine the stress she places on herself now, knowing kids across the country are face-to-face, are doing musicals, plays, taking acting and voice lessons in person. She is now a full year academically behind, and it weighs heavily on her. My youngest, whom you have met twice, now with ADHD and a 504, can no longer sit in the same room as me and virtually learn. It is ruining our relationship for me to have and help him teach him. My gifted ninth grader is slowly losing interest in class, as I imagine he is engaged in class and now just completes the work. We hear from our staff and families who have pre-existing medical conditions, and returning to school is scary for them. For many, mental health is a pre-existing medical condition, and the isolation of virtual learning often makes their illness worse. I remind you that when you pull up the Virginia Beach Public Schools webpage, your mission statement, vision statement, and values state, "We put students first." Please follow your own mission statement and consider the students' needs first. In each of your mailboxes, let's all laugh at the large size of this when I printed it out. I printed out what I found and I came across last night. It says, "Put students first, seek growth, be open to change, do great work together, value differences." I think we're having a hard time with all of this. Every student is achieving at his or her own maximum potential. Our students at home are not doing this, and inspiring and challenging in a learning environment. I ask that you guys please read.
Thirty seconds.
Please read the mission statement in your mailbox. If not, recycle it, draw on it, play tic-tac-toe, burn it in your fire pit outside. But thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and please, please, please put students first. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rayanne Hancock.
Welcome. Thank you. It's going to be a long evening for you all, I'm sorry for that, but it feels good to be able to share our thoughts and feelings. I know we're all here together for the right reasons. So my name is Rayanne Hancock, and I put my readers on to read this. I am the parent of high schoolers, a daughter-in-law of a schoolteacher who retired after 18 years. Oh, but they fog up, that's worse. For 18 years, after 18 years in the Virginia Beach Public School. I'm an employer of essential workers, management and technology consulting professional who has spent the majority of my career working in health and public service. I'm a mentor to many professional women, and I'm an ambassador for local survivors of sex trafficking. I spoke at the September board meeting, where I shared the same perspective that I shared today. I believe that students are safest in school based on the experiences today across the globe and in our own community. I believe that parents should have the ability to choose virtual or in-person learning, and citizens should respect the decisions of parents who are ultimately accountable for raising their children. I believe that teachers should have the ability to choose virtual or in-person learning, and citizens should respect the decisions of teachers who are ultimately responsible for making the best decisions based on their individual circumstances. Many of us in other professions have had to do the same thing. I believe that the socioeconomic costs to our community are much greater when our schools are closed. I believe that the social determinants of health go far beyond one health metric and will ultimately impact health outcomes in the most vulnerable populations. I believe that the mental health crisis will continue to result in more deaths in the student population than the deaths from COVID-19. I believe that the administration developed a plan that provides parents and teachers with choice, and citizens should respect their choice rather than fight against those who choose differently. I believe that the administration has done a phenomenal job following guidelines from reputable government and private organizations and putting safety interventions in place that have worked. I believe that the metrics in the current plan do not take into account the latest experience and information regarding the role of community metrics as it relates to transmission in school. I believe that a quality education addresses the whole child. Academic, social, emotional, and physical development are equally important. And I believe that the public school system was put in place to provide a quality education, and there is no place for politics when it comes to putting students first in education. Not only do I believe this to be true, there are many citations from reputable organizations and schools across the globe that could be provided. I've emailed all of you on multiple occasions with a variety of references, as have my fellow citizens. You have more data than you probably know what to do with at this point. I'd like to close with a story from my heart. My grandmother passed away on Christmas Day. She was living relatively independently until she moved into a home in March. Unfortunately, that was the same time that COVID-19 hit, and she was isolated in her room in the facility. Our family kept her in the home because there was a waitlist.
Thirty seconds.
It would be too long, and she ultimately died from pneumonia, which is now included with flu in the COVID-19 metrics. I know for a fact that isolation played a role in the decline of her health. And so she, like my son's grandmothers and grandparents, are advocates for their grandchildren to return to school. And they are capable of making the decision for themselves. I pray for wisdom and discernment as you make this important.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Dixon.
Welcome.
Put students first, seek growth, be open to change, do great work together, value differences. After listening to the panel physicians last week at the workshop, I'm not going to discuss what has already been recommended other than to reinforce their stance is crystal clear. Students who wish to be back in school face-to-face should have a choice to do so. It is time to put their needs first, as the mission statement says. Many have stood at this podium over the past several months and advocated for just this. However, there are many families who don't have the privilege to come to meetings, to attend parent workshops that offer tips and strategies, or to advocate for their own children. These are the students I wish to speak about tonight. I work as a behavioral health therapist in the largest hospital system in Virginia, seeing Virginia Beach City Public Schools students in three different emergency departments. I've evaluated over 1,000 patients last year and participated in care for hundreds more. Over the past nine months, I've seen close to double the number of pediatric patients as I did last year. The month that stands out over all others is November, when I saw 17 children. And just to give you guys some perspective, I have 16 colleagues doing the same work daily as we provide psychiatric services 24/7. All 17 patients cited virtual learning as a stressor, with concerns noted such as feeling isolated, not understanding the work, online learning making it difficult to understand and get help, increased bullying, lack of sports, less peer interaction, being trapped at home in unsafe environments, and failing grades. One of those children was an elementary-aged child whose mother brought him in after he threatened to harm himself because he felt unseen, frustrated, and missed his friends. He had an IEP, and his mother not only felt unequipped to help him, she had to quit her job to stay home to try and keep them somewhat on task and supervised during the day. Tears streamed on her face as she asked me to just put him somewhere. "I can't help him. I can barely make it myself." She was watching as everything she had worked for as a single mother fell apart before her eyes. A 13-year-old who intentionally ingested 18 Tylenol with parents who thought they were close, but had no idea that when they left for work each day, their child was failing, completely alone, and was being bullied on social media. A 17-year-old who had not stepped foot in high school for a senior year and wanted to drag his car into a tree. "What's the point?" he said. "At this point, I've given up on ever going back." An 11-year-old who cut both wrists, who was failing for the first time, and said she had asked her teacher for help, but even with attempted help, she just couldn't get it. A 15-year-old who tried to overdose and went to the Kempsville Center for the third time since the pandemic hit. Besides citing virtual learning as a factor, all of these children have something else in common. They had no prior psychiatric history. None of them had been on meds, none had seen a counselor, and none had ever had prior inpatient admissions. Mental health may have already been a public health crisis, but since this pandemic hit, it has skyrocketed, leaving parents who have the ability to get their kids help unable to do so. Outpatient counseling has a waitlist, with some practices taking 12 weeks to get patients in.
Thirty seconds.
Inpatient psychiatric facilities are statewide at capacity, sometimes for days. And again, while this has happened in the past, it has never been this frequent or this long, with sometimes even Commonwealth, a state-run facility on diversion, unable to accept patients. My experience is supported by other providers in this area, CHKDNV, Virginia Beach CSB, Borth. Both have cited substantial increases in patient volume and requests for services. I'm asking you to please put students first and support Dr. Spence.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, that was our last in-person speaker.
Okay, so pursuant to our approved agenda for the evening, we will now pivot to consent agenda. And I will announce the items presented this evening as part of the consent agenda. A, SchoolAG, comprehensive evaluation recommendations. B, Policy Review Committee recommendations. Three, that include one, policy 259, outside legal counsel. Two, policy 417, suspension of work of teachers or classified employees. Three, policy 4-39, employee professional development and growth in job skills. Any, so we'll start with motion to approve in a second before we open it up. Well, no, this is consent, excuse me. So, all right, that's it for consent. So, any modifications to the consent agenda? Right, motion, my first instinct. Okay, Mrs. Riggs, thank you, and a second. Mrs. Anderson. Okay, please show your affirmation with a raised hand.
Ms. Milnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And I believe we now go to action. A, the Personnel Report, Administrative Appointments. Just, just A. So a motion to approve. Mrs. Holt, a second. Ms. Owens. Okay, discussion. Please show your approval with raised hand.
Ms. Milnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Dr. Spence, do you have any appointments to note?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you. I would like to recognize Sham Priest Sham Bevel. Sham has served with distinction here in Virginia Beach as well as in Norfolk Public Schools and at the American International School in Abu Dhabi. She's served in Virginia Beach as a secondary science instructional specialist, as an administrative assistant at Bayside Middle School, most recently has been serving as an assistant principal at Great Neck Middle School this evening. I'm pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Ms. Bevel to serve as the next principal of the Bayside 6th Grade Campus. And I'll note briefly that the reason that she'll be serving as the next principal of the Bayside 6th Grade Campus is because of our reassignment of Camille Harmon to serve as the next principal at Bayside Middle School. So congratulations to both of those ladies.
Thank you, and we do want to add our congratulations. So, what I want to, before we pivot to our Zoom speakers, we're going to need, we can either break now or we'll do it now, and then we'll determine if we'll do another short break in the midst of the speakers. So with that, Zoom speakers, just bear with us for a short 10-minute break. Would you introduce our first?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first online speaker is Bree Calkins. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Bree Calkins, and I am first and foremost a scientist, but I also happen to teach biology at GRC. I'm here this evening to address the proposed changes to the reopening plan. I'm gravely concerned with the statements that are being made by the medical panel regarding children not spreading COVID. Dr. Zoe Hyde, an epidemiologist, published an article in the Medical Journal of Australia in November, citing that children do not appear to be less infectious. The amount of viral RNA detected in nasal swabs of children aged 5 to 17 were similar to that of adults, and children younger than five were shown to have levels of genetic material that were 10 to 100 times higher than adults. Hyde also determined that children have the potential to play a role in community transmission due to the large number of contacts they have in school settings. She concluded that schools must not remain open for face-to-face instruction in the setting of substantial community transmission. Additionally, the COVID-19 Working Group in Italy published new findings last month. They examined transmission in the schools of northern Italy after reopening. These schools were using similar mitigation protocols to ours, wearing masks, social distancing of three feet, and a hybrid model. Findings included index cases that demonstrated that spread had occurred from adult to child to a classmate, but was caught due to testing, which is something we don't do. One elementary, five middle, and six high schools experienced spread. Dr. LaRosa concluded that there was a non-negligible number of cases in the 10 to 18 age groups. This begs the question of if our district is doing enough to find out if our students, symptomatic or not, are actually infected at any given time during face-to-face instruction. Why don't we have protocols in place to regularly test all members of the VBCPS family so we can get concrete data? Instead, we have insufficient data to make an accurate and justifiable decision on the reopening of schools. You may justify your reopening of schools in February best on our mitigation efforts. However, December research out of the physics of fluids indicated that masked social interactions that occurred within six feet of distance still led to a sufficient number of viral particles being transmitted from one individual to another. The only mask that offered complete protection was the N95, which is currently in short supply. None of the cloth masks examined managed to prevent spread between people after a single cough or sneeze. This leads one to believe that even though you cite mask-wearing and social distancing of three feet when feasible as prevention measures, they are not sufficient, especially in times of high community spread. I am also dismayed to hear the claims regarding virtual learning as being the sole reason for a lack of performance. I am asking you to consider other factors at play. 2020 was appalling. Our students watched a pandemic, civil unrest, political turmoil, and dissension unfold on TV. Many of our beloved families have been experiencing financial hardship due to the ongoing pandemic, resulting in food insecurity and the potential for homelessness. I've had my own students experience COVID firsthand, as well as the loss of family members. And to add to all of this heartache, the district also changed our schedule to a four-by-four, resulting in kids having to learn at warp speed while worrying about missing class, falling quickly behind in looming SOLs. As an IB biology teacher, I have had to compact a year's worth of college-level curriculum into the span of three to four months. These variables alone are anxiety and depression-inducing for students and faculty alike. No wonder our students are struggling. But despite all of these hardships, I have also seen our students come together in support of their peers, as well as the faculty, because we are a family. We are on the verge of vaccinations. Waiting for a little while longer to ensure that your employees get both doses of the vaccine according to a plan before having to return to campus would likely ease the concerns of many. Lastly, I do not feel that a public health decision should fall solely on our superintendent, who has an extensive educational background but does not have a public health or medical background. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly Weisenbeck. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Spence and members of our school board. I'm an instructional technology specialist here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I have proudly served this district for nearly 19 years. While I understand the strong desire to return our students into the classroom with their teachers, I do not understand how this body can overlook what is happening during the pandemic. We see on the news every day that the numbers are staggering in positive cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. In fact, just recently, we lost a dedicated educator who I had the privilege and honor of teaching with for many years. You are proposing sending teachers and students back into this classroom at the height of this pandemic. It's been stated that schools have the proper safety mitigations in place, but as someone who has been in the face-to-face setting, I can tell you those mitigations are not closely adhered to. When our young students first came back into our buildings, adherence to social distancing and masks was new. I watched youngsters walking down the hallway like an Egyptian. Although it wasn't technically three feet, it was the best our staff could do to clearly hook the idea of social distancing into these young minds. After about one and a half weeks, it was no longer an effective strategy. I have seen firsthand students coming in from buses without masks, students walking down the hallways very closely, often with multiple classes passing each other on the way to other areas. I wish I could say the adults were better at following protocols. I have seen staff members walking with other staff members down the hallway, ignoring the one-way signs on the floor. I have seen staff members wearing their masks below their noses in front of students, and teachers walking with students while unmasked because they had a drink of coffee in their hands. Being face-to-face during Yellow Yellow took a toll on my health. My anxiety and depression levels skyrocketed. One of my duties is to monitor lunch in the cafeteria, and my shift was an hour long. This duty required me to walk around the cafeteria of students, who, because they were sitting six feet apart, yelled and screamed to friends across the cafeteria. Unmasked little ones needed assistance opening containers, which cannot be done while socially distancing. By 20 minutes into that shift, my heart was racing, my hands were sweating, my body shaking. I would walk around the cafeteria, digging my fingernails into the palm of my hand, trying to keep control of the rising anxiety. Before the shift was over, I would sneak out the back door to get fresh air, take deep breaths, raining in my terror. The anxiety caused by being face-to-face is left to health issues. Insomnia, tension headaches, teeth grinding, and stomach issues plague me every day. I'm afraid and anxious that I'll carry this disease home to my family, including my elderly mother. Again, I, like many educators, want our kids back in school, but only when it's safe for all of us. The metrics show a rising number of positive cases and deaths. Many educated teachers are struggling with the same depression and anxiety that I just described. Have you asked how many Virginia Beach educators are considering other jobs that will allow us to protect our physical, mental health, and our families? It might just astound you. What will our classrooms be without their teachers? Please take a step back and truly consider the safety of all involved. Let teachers get safely and completely vaccinated so we can do our jobs without fear and anxiety. You owe us that much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number three has asked to be removed from the list, so we're moving on to number four, Mary Reisenmeyer. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Spence. I prepared my comments to encourage the board to approve Dr. Spence's 5-January plan to return Option 1 students back to face-to-face instruction. I was disheartened to learn today that he has changed his recommendation, pushing the start date back three additional weeks. From my understanding, this is largely due to Dr. Lindsay being the medical outlier. By my count, there are at least 19 other medical professionals who have told this board that they support the plan proposed on 5-January. Dr. Lindsay's primary concern appears to Dr. Lindsay's primary concern appears to be that minority populations are disproportionately suffering from COVID. She doesn't seem to be concerned at all at the unintended consequences of keeping all students virtual. Does she realize that the same population is most negatively affected academically? Does she not understand that this same population has less access to mental health care and regular health care? She appears to be solely concerned with COVID. You, board members, must be concerned about all aspects of students. You must do a risk-benefit analysis. Life is not without risk. Despite the COVID numbers in the community, getting students back in the classroom is the right thing to do, to put students first, as your mission statement says. Studies show that schools are not super-spreaders. We know the mitigation measures work. We've heard that from many other school districts, and they've seen it in our own school district. It is extremely disappointing. The major problem is contact tracing, months after COVID entered our lives. It should have been no surprise that the numbers would increase during the traditional flu season. The lack of preparedness is simply put, a failure. While I understand that some students are thriving with virtual learning, that is not the case for all students. The symptoms that Ms. Wiesenbeck or Wiesenbeck just described are exactly the same that students experience daily in virtual learning. You saw the information provided last week regarding the decline in academics. You've heard from medical experts regarding the sharp increase in mental health problems for not only our students but our teachers. There was a candlelight vigil tonight in front of your building to honor and reflect upon those students who have been lost to the tragedy of suicide during this period of virtual learning, and to encourage and support those students struggling with the loneliness, isolation, and academic anxiety virtual learning has either produced or compounded. As Dr. Spence has said, there is no way forward that is going to satisfy everyone. There are people on both sides of this issue with strong opinions. I urge you to listen to the doctors who have spoken before you. I urge you to rely on the 32-page document Dr. Spence provided that contains the science that supports students returning face-to-face. Option 1 students deserve the opportunity to return to face-to-face instruction they need. It is not a want. This academic and mental health decline for our students must be reversed. By voting to approve Dr. Spence's 5-January Plan, you will be taking the first step in the right direction to help our struggling, some failing, students get back on track. Based on the most recent scientific evidence available, failure to approve the 5-January Plan would be an abuse of discretion and arbitrary and capricious. If, however, you approve the plan presented today, Dr. Spence has asked that you grant him the authority to consult with the internal staff and health department to determine if they can sufficiently meet contacting tracing requirements. I agree with that. However, I do not agree with you giving the authority to defer face-to-face instruction further if he cannot guarantee that, meeting that requirement. The board should either schedule additional meeting or agree to have an emergency meeting if necessary. Dr. Spence should be required to report to you exactly why VBCPS cannot provide the assurances for contact tracing, if that be the case.
And that is time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ginny Nant. Please unmute.
Ginny Nant, good evening. First, I would like to thank you for having a virtual option available for speakers. The opportunity to speak and still be heard gives confidence to the community that you truly care about what we have to say. I am here today to speak on behalf of VBCPS teachers and staff. I am in a unique position to do this because just a few months ago, I was a teacher for Virginia Beach. After 15 years, I did something I never thought I would do. I resigned. I left behind thousands of hours of hard and successful work, colleagues that became my family, and students that made me proud. I resigned for the first time in the total of 18 years I worked for VBCPS because I lost all trust that the leaders I held in such high regard valued me, or valued me in return. I felt backed into a corner with a choice between keeping myself and my family safe from this insidious new virus and the job that I loved. October 7, 2020 was one of the hardest days of my life, and it didn't have to happen that way. You now have the opportunity to show all of the teachers and staff that still work for you that you truly believe that they are so valuable, so irreplaceable, and so appreciated that you will not needlessly put them in harm's way. If you approve Dr. Spence's new plan that abandons all defined metrics and gives him unilateral authority to name a return date, you will have squandered an opportunity to show them the kind of leadership that truly matters, the kind where people with the least power are shown the most respect. I created an informal anonymous survey for VBCPS staff. I received over 500 responses within a week. That number dwarfs any teacher forum being used to bolster this new plan. I asked them what option they chose for themselves in the beginning of this. 67% said they chose Option 1 initially. 28% chose 2, and the remainder indicated they'd never had a choice. When all the schedules were created and everything shook out, 92% were assigned Option 1 or hybrid, and 8% were assigned Option 2. Finally, I asked them which option they would choose now, knowing the details of this new return-to-school plan. 9% said Option 1, 89% said Option 2, and many said it still didn't matter what they chose because they were told they had no choice. Amplify these results. It is obvious a huge percentage of your staff feel that the community conditions call for them to remain virtual at least until a vaccine is available to them, and yet they are not being given a choice. They feel abandoned, disposable, and lied to. Within the hundreds of responses, I counted 17 staff that have said that they are preparing to resign or retire early. Hundreds mentioned how they have lost trust in your leadership. Hundreds more discuss physical and mental health struggles they are now enduring due to the intense stress and anxiety they have over not being able to manage their own safety. One teacher mentioned the lesson planning protocol we used years ago called UBD, Understanding by Design. The goal is to plan with the end in mind. What end does this new plan, in fact, plan for? Is it one where staff feel valued and safe? Is it one where time, effort, and money is spent on improving educational outcomes in the safest and most consistent format possible? Is it one where the goal is to make sure we come out on the other side of this pandemic with the knowledge that we made the best decision for the two groups that matter the most, students and the adults that teach and support them?
30 seconds.
One short-term survey had is that it was limited in who could participate. It was meant for staff members only. Enter the Virginia Beach Educated Unites Groups, which is a group of community stakeholders in pursuit of a safe return to in-person learning for VBCPS. The VB EU circulated a petition, and there are currently 2,693 signatures from our community, and the number continues to grow. The petition urges the Virginia Beach School Board to reject the current proposed plan
And that is time.
to return students to buildings on February 1, regardless of community
And that is time.
Feel free to follow up via email. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melinda Rogers. Please unmute.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Spence for this opportunity to have a voice in this decision process. I'm a stakeholder as the parent to a high school, middle school, and elementary school student, but I'm also a pre-kindergarten teacher with the division and felt it was important to accurately represent the teaching experience during this pandemic. I understand that Division has spoken extensively about the health and safety mitigations they have implemented during this time. However, I have not heard anyone speak about how those mitigations have been put into practice inside a classroom on a day-to-day basis during this in-person instruction. That's something I can do. In the building I work in, we have a fully-staffed custodial team, which is not the case in every building. However, there is absolutely no way for the custodial staff to implement the amount of cleaning required to meet health and safety standards. Therefore, the job of cleaning then falls to the instructional staff. In classrooms, staff are tasked with the following: cleaning student desks before and after snacks and meals, cleaning surfaces, chairs, plexiglass partitions, and manipulatives between small group instruction, cleaning bathrooms and classrooms between student use, cleaning all high-touch surfaces including doorknobs, lights, switches, paper towel holders, soap dispensers, and water fountains located in classrooms, and of course, ensuring that all students wash their hands multiple times daily. The cleaning spray provided states that it's unsafe for children, recommends that the user wear gloves for protection, and that the cleaner must sit on surfaces for the minimum of three minutes in order to be effective. Multiple times daily, teachers must use instructional time to perform these tasks during in-person instruction. Last week, data was presented to the board regarding the loss of learning occurring during this pandemic, and it was asserted this is due to virtual instruction, but there were notable admissions. First of all, students had already lost instruction during the 2020 spring semester due to the emergency learning plan, whose goal was to keep students at the level they were at and not designed to give students new and learning material. Second, in-person instructional time has decreased due to cleaning procedures, as mentioned. This reasonably would result in lower test scores and the need for more student interventions across the district. Last, during a global pandemic, students have other distractions. To be clear, lower test scores cannot be attributed to virtual instruction alone. I'd like to thank Dr. Lindsay for her clarification tonight regarding community spread. Schools do not exist in a vacuum unto themselves, and what happens in the community translates to conditions inside schools. Refusal of safety protocols routinely occurs in Virginia Beach and even within this body of governors, and it directly results in higher rates of COVID transmission in the community, of which all staff and students are members. Therefore, staff and students should be given the opportunity to make a new choice, especially when they were asked to make decisions based on a metric that the district is no longer honoring. How is the community expected to put their trust in the district when changes are being made without any standard or oversight being followed? And if we are going to provide equity in education for our students of color, we must acknowledge that this pandemic is hitting families of color harder than any other demographic and provide them with the virtual instruction they deserve and not just offer concurrent learning. To date, how many students and staff have been denied when requesting to change to Option 2? The district should have that information to share with you. On a personal note, I've already experienced a two-week quarantine due to exposure from colleague. Due to the fact that this exposure did not happen in a building, the data was not included as part of the overall school cases. And during that time, I was advised I could not hug or kiss my own children.
30 seconds.
My eight-year-old cried every night that he didn't want me to get sick and die, and I can't put my children through that again to do my job. At the end of the day, there is one thing students need but can't be measured with a data point, and it's not found within four walls of the building. Students need relationships with the staff that they know that care about them. My own students have told me they can't wait for me to do a next delivery. I take materials to students' homes because I care about them. Please don't make decisions that would cause our staff to resign and leave our students without the relationships they desperately need to get them through this pandemic.
And that is time.
I stand with teachers and students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Laura Leehart. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. I am the parent of a second-grade special ed student in VBCPS. My daughter is in a self-contained classroom. I am speaking on behalf of my daughter and of all other special needs students like her. My daughter, like many other special ed students, is struggling with virtual learning. Struggling is saying it lightly. She had a hard time learning in a physical school classroom, so you can imagine how hard it is for her to learn virtually. Well, maybe you can't imagine that unless you've been in our shoes. So let me explain how our virtual day, our school day, goes. It starts every day by having to explain to my daughter that she is not going to school but that we will see her teacher and friends on her laptop. She doesn't understand this. She wants to ride on the bus. She wants to be in school with her friends and teacher. I then get her logged in, and we wait. Most of the time, only one or two other students out of six in her class join us and the teacher. I have to sit with my daughter 100% of the time, and the day proceeds on with a lot of tantrums, kids not wanting to participate, videos not playing correctly, kids talking over the teacher, and so on. I watch my daughter and the other students quickly get frustrated. Her teacher and parent are doing their best, but they know that they cannot effectively reach these students virtually. These students especially, but all Option 1 students, need to be in school. The mental toll that this has taken on not only my daughter but myself is awful. I fear that my daughter will be even further behind than she already is. I do my best to help teach her after the virtual day is over, but I also work full-time. As a parent, I have done my part and doing it daily. However, I do not feel that this school has. I have spoken with staff at my daughter's school, and they have explained that the health mitigations are in fact in place, and they genuinely feel safe in the classroom. My daughter keeps her mask on, and I have witnessed other kids in her class wearing them as well. I specifically point this out after some negative comments were made about special needs students from board members at past school board meetings. Absolutely unacceptable. Since this situation is about health and not politics, I am urging the board to listen to the medical professionals that have all shared that there are far more reasons for the schools to be open rather than closed. Virtual learning does not work for special ed, and it shows. We are far enough into this. We have learned a lot about this virus, and we have made changes. It's time to make a big change now and get our Option 1 students and staff back in the classroom. When is our school administration and school board going to advocate for our children? I can take my daughter almost anywhere right now, yet I cannot send her to school. Please make that make sense. It does not. Option 2 families have had their way this entire time, yet Option 1 families have not. If parents are going to be given a choice, then fulfill their wishes. I understand the new plan has changed just in the last few hours. However, please stop pushing back the opening date. Today, the main issue seems to be contact tracing. Next week, it will be something else. This virus is not going away anytime soon. However, it is time to stop pushing our children's education aside and start making it a priority again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Speakers number eight and nine are not online, so we'll go to speaker number 10, Laura Pyle. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Spence and members of the school board. As I watch the impact of COVID on my family and on the community at large, I remain skeptical that returning students, teachers, and staff to buildings at this point is prudent. I speak to you tonight as a parent who chose Option 1 for her children based on the metric system that was in place at the beginning of the school year and in December. I also speak to you as a parent of a differently-wired child, a fourth grader at ODS who is both gifted and autistic, known as twice-exceptional or 2E. I am specifically concerned about the impacts of the proposed changes on differently-wired children. My child, like many autistic children, as well as many neurotypical children, finds comfort in consistency and routine. As many researchers have noted, feelings of security lead to better educational and behavioral outcomes for all children, but especially for differently-wired children. The works of Dan Siegel and Tina Payne Bryson, such as The Whole Brain Child and The Power of Showing Up, as well as the work of Mona Adelahook in Beyond Behaviors are a few of my favorites. The past year has not been easy for all students and has been especially difficult for our 2E child. Virtual school is not a great fit for him or his learning style, but we're now settled into a routine, and we are beyond grateful for his incredible teacher and the amazing administration and staff at ODS. I have no words to adequately express my appreciation for these extraordinary individuals. If students and teachers return to buildings on February 1, we most certainly will have cases of COVID in the schools. Inevitably, classes or schools will be forced to quarantine and transition from face-to-face back to virtual learning and back again at times. These transitions and routine changes, which will be more frequent than under the fall plan, given the extremely high COVID case count in our community, will be very disruptive to learning for differently-wired students. Furthermore, switching our 2E child to Option 2 to avoid these multiple routine changes would be completely devastating. Our child's teacher has worked hard to foster a relationship with him and his class. Tearing that structure apart at this point in the school year would be a major change and total disruption to his education. I also fear that the size of the virtual classrooms will become unmanageable or that classrooms all over the district will need to be readjusted to accommodate changes from Option 1 to Option 2, thereby affecting the routines of all students. I understand that you face an impossible decision. Whether or not you accept the proposed changes tonight, a faction of parents will be unhappy. However, the research forwarded to parents by email on January 7 to support these changes does not address the uncertainty of new COVID variants or a new study published by the Journal of the American Medical Association yesterday, expressing concern about rising pediatric COVID hospitalizations. At this afternoon's workshop, Dr. Lindsay from the Virginia Beach Health Department suggested returning to the buildings may not be a good idea. At the very least, the proposed changes would cause unnecessary uncertainty for students. Therefore, I ask that you pause to consider the consequences of the proposed changes on students, especially differently-wired students who take comfort in consistency and routine. Please consider keeping the fall plan in place rather than rushing to change it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stacy Martin. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Spence and board members. I've been listening to the school board meeting since summer 2019 to get a handle on what to expect for my children and for our community, and for now, I'm homeschooling. You, as board members, are elected to represent us parents. Don't give up the voice we have through you. Unilateral decision-making by the administration silences our voice. Sending teachers back to the classroom without vaccinations Sending teachers back to the classroom without vaccinations, without metrics as a guide, and without school board member votes is unacceptable. Teachers won't stand for it much longer, and I stand with them. Thousands of cybersecurity jobs are opening at the federal and state level, and cybersecurity has a career, career switcher program too, is called Fast Forward at TCC. And so as of yesterday, there are 97 certified teaching and administrative positions open, 51 substitute and supplemental positions, 104 support classified and trades positions. That's 252 positions that you can't fill, even at a 14% unemployment rate. Many of you earlier wondered why the Health Department can't fill positions. I think you need to look in the mirror. Folks are resigning and retiring, and nobody is applying because trust in VBCPS is breaking. As an ODU instructor, I know there are not enough education majors to make up the difference in resignations and retirees. I don't want to send my son back to school with all-new career switchers on provisional licenses or with substitutes recruited from the back of a bus at a Walmart parking lot. I love the Career Switchers Teacher License Program, and I've taught many of them. But if we lose all our experienced teachers, those career switchers will not have mentors to guide them through their transition. Without mentors, we will lose career switchers before they complete the program. I want to send my son back to a school system with teachers who have years of experience and who understand classroom management, remediation, and pacing. I want to send my son back to a school system where mentors are abundant and institutional knowledge is passed down. I want to send my son back to a school system where classes are small and specialists are available. I worry for the future of our students, who will need experienced teachers to make up learning loss next year and all the years going forward. Going back in person tomorrow, next week, or next month will not make up for learning loss this past year. We're now in this for the long haul. Vaccinations for all Virginia adults will take most of 2021. The children's vaccine is still in the trial phase with a projected early 2022 rollout, and that's only for kids 12 and up. Moderna and Pfizer both acknowledge that their vaccine does not provide sterilizing immunity. Vaccine only prevents the full cascade of COVID's effects. Fully vaccinated adults can still be asymptomatic COVID carriers and infect children. Unvaccinated teens can infect other teens. Because of this, a large number of students, especially in middle and high school, will need to remain virtual for the next year. All I've heard in the last six months is about the quantity of kids in face-to-face learning and nothing about the quality of virtual learning. Learning by laptop is not going away, and I'd like to see some time, energy, and money devoted to improving the quality of virtual education. I'd like to see asynchronous options developed for middle and high school. Mastery of skills through scaffolding can't be done in a few months. We'll be in remediation mode for several years.
Thirty seconds.
Prepare for a future where you can rely on experienced teachers to balance remediation with pacing. Prepare for a future when not all schooling is in person. Right now, you can't see the forest for the trees. There's no back to normal. There's only a new normal, and that new normal includes a laptop, whether students are in person or virtual. Prepare for that future by keeping our teachers safe today. Stick with the original, color-coded, metric-based plan to bring some students back face-to-face when metrics allow.
And that is time.
And start discussing how you can improve virtual learning.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kat Evans. Please unmute.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. My name is Kat Evans. I'm a mother of a high school student at Ocean Lakes and their Math and Science Academy, and I'm a third-grade teacher in Virginia Beach. I've already seen the emails on four cases at my daughter's school, and that's just while SOLs are taking place. With the CDC rating for K through 12 showing Virginia Beach at highest risk for its two primary metrics, I do not feel safe sending my daughter to school for SOLs, and especially not feeling safe to send her for face-to-face learning. In November, the cases, the number of cases per 1,000 people was 213.9, and the percent positive was 6.2%. And then a month later, in November, in that same month, they said it was not, it was not safe to go face-to-face. And then a month later, in December, the cases moved up to 489.8 for, eight for the 100% per people, 100,000 per people, and the percent positive was 11.2. Again, today, the cases for one, per 100,000 people was 1,046. That's almost five times the amount, and the percent positive is 19.4, almost three times the percentage increase. How does delaying the opening from the 19th to February 1st make any sense? The data shows the numbers are climbing rapidly, and even if all the teachers received their first shot for one of the vaccinations today, there wouldn't be enough time for teachers to build up the antibodies and receive the second shot and then wait the appropriate time after the second shot to get their immunity. It wouldn't be safe by February 1st. It's not physically possible. Parents are given the opportunity to change their selection from option-one to two, but many are on the waiting list to go to school for virtual. Teachers weren't given the option to update their selection. The metrics that these decisions were based on have drastically gotten worse. Parent and staff feel that division is not being transparent enough. Teachers are retiring early and resigning because they don't feel safe or supported by you. How many senior staff are working virtually while children and teachers are required to return to the building February 1st to risk their health and teach or learn in awkward, prohibitive environments with these high metrics and no sufficient time for vaccinations? I keep hearing about putting kids back in school, but they haven't stopped. We've been in school this whole time. We've been teaching. Students have been learning. All of my students have been shown growth. They're learning. We laugh, learn, and connect with each other every day. It's just virtual. We're in school five days a week. Asynchronous days are school days, too. My students are learning and working on Mondays as well. The learning hasn't stopped. It's simply changed to a format that keeps us safe. You're asking us, what you're being asked to vote to grant authority to be able to delay face-to-face or to bring back students without board approval. How is this okay? How is it okay to take away the voice of the community? Teachers, staff, and students should not be required to enter the buildings, especially when they can learn or work remotely. We should be trying to keep everyone safe. Counselors are bouncing back and forth from multiple schools, and they're not permitted to be virtual, putting them at great risk to exposure. Staff with health risks, newborn babies, pregnancies, and living with at-risk family members shouldn't be required to be in the buildings. That includes specialists, counselors, admin,
Thirty seconds.
office staff, and security. Please delay the vote. I'm a mother and a teacher. I stand with students, and I stand with teachers and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tara Haskins. Please unmute.
Welcome. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I'd love to share that I am a product of Virginia Beach Public Schools, and I, I share that my experience here has served as a foundation that contributed to me entering the educational field, and I'm now serving as a founding principal. And I say that because I understand that the intention behind every decision we make is to support the safety and learning of our scholars. Each person here believes that the decision is doing so. But with that, I also want to make sure we understand that the heart of these decisions are grounded in safety first. And with safety in mind, I want us to consider and truly consider what is best for scholars and staff. When we think about equity, there are a few questions I want us to consider. First, knowing that the data shows that COVID cases are increasing in our community. In fact, when we look closer at the data, communities that have the highest poverty rate and the highest amount of people of color are least likely to receive the resources they need. And so, and also have the highest number of COVID cases. I want us to at first also acknowledge that it's due to the systemic structures that have contributed to furthering inequities. And so when we think about how returning in person impacts our communities and equity and safety in mind, I hear a lot of things about we want scholars learning. But with that, let's really consider the people that are giving our scholars tools to learn, which are our teachers. What happens to teacher safety when they're in front of our scholars? What happens to the support that they feel, knowing that they are going home to their families, when I heard earlier that we're unable to solidify contact tracing? It is vital that instead of thinking about how we can make it work in person, how can we arm our teachers with the tools to do high-quality instruction virtually? Because safety is at the center of our decisions. Because in order for a child to learn, they have to feel safe first. In order for a child, a teacher to be their best self-instructionally in front of our scholars, they have to feel safe first. And I also want us to really consider our leaders, who are making strategic decisions each day, not only for the students that we serve, but the teachers who go home to their families. As a leader who makes decisions, I understand that if I myself am not my best, I am unable to make those strategic, strategic decisions. And when you're in person, it immediately impacts your ability to think, am I truly being safe for all? And so I heard earlier, a lot of people mentioned our scholars are behind. We don't want them to be behind. But I want to name that a sense of urgency and deficit thinking is rooted in supremacy culture. Instead of focusing on what our scholars don't have, we're making assumptions that they're lacking things. We can instead ask ourselves, what have our students gained through this? Many have gained responsibility from having to manage time or manage other responsibilities for even caring for other siblings. They're figuring out ways to ask for help. They're figuring out ways to use their voice and advocate for their needs. They're learning to leverage their strengths. And when we think about the true purpose of learning, that is what it's grounded in. I encourage us to ask ourselves when we think about learning, what happens if we slow down? Instead of trying to fit a year's worth of in-person instruction in this small amount of time, let's first say, what is the priority? What are the priority standards or concept or skills our kids must master? And how can we slow down pacing to where scholars feel successful, teachers feel they have what they need to support instruction, and our leaders can strategically focus on supporting teachers and families and scholars? And I'm just sharing this with you because I know, as a principal, I know the decisions we make are sometimes are not the best. But with good leadership, it also comes a point where you
And that is time.
and data is more than numbers. And you ask yourself,
And that is time.
how can I plan change and what needs to change?
Thank you.
So thank you so much for your time of making sure that we're just keeping
Ms. Haskins, that is time.
true safety at the forefront of our decisions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cindy Cubey. Please unmute.
Good evening, Dr. Spence and board members. I am so grateful for this opportunity. My name is Cindy Cubey.
Ms. Cubey, excuse us. Uh, there's a volume issue. Can you try to speak up, or we'll see?
Yeah, I'll try to start again. Is this a little bit better?
No.
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 Uh-oh. Um, that's not a good situation. Let me see. Very disappointing, you guys.
Uh, well, we can, we'll just proceed then. Just wanted to give you the opportunity. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Um, I'm a Virginia Beach resident of 30 years and a teacher for Virginia Beach for 15. One of the first careers I embarked upon after college graduation was as a fisheries biologist for the National Marine Fisheries Service. I was responsible for collecting, analyzing, and distributing data to be used for decision-making regarding the health of East Coast fishing stocks. As an educator for 20 years, I have collected and analyzed data to drive instruction, remediation, curriculum development, and professional learning. The importance of data science in decision-making cannot be overstated. Today, society requires scientifically literate citizens. Data science informs decision-making in every aspect of our lives. In our science classrooms, we consistently teach and emphasize the importance of understanding data, of collecting evidence from reliable sources to support our hypotheses and conclusions. But what constitutes reliable data? In the case of managing our commercial fisheries, would we disregard statistics collected and analyzed by the National Marine Fisheries Service? No. Would we disregard or overlook that data in favor of data collected and presented by local fishermen and their associated stakeholders? No. Would that data be considered the most reliable? No. Would that data represent the least bias? No. The 32-page research brief compiled by a group of local physicians only presents data in support of a single aspect of this crisis. I do not accept this data in abandonment of the metrics that have informed our school divisions' decisions thus far. The metrics and data from the VBH and CDC are the most reliable data we have today to inform our decision about returning our students and staff to face-to-face learning. Regarding face-to-face instruction, I believe there is a false narrative being told that somehow face-to-face with mitigation strategies in place is advantageous or superior in many ways to virtual learning. The necessary mitigation strategies of wearing masks and social distancing do not support student engagement and collaborative learning or in socialization in the ways that we expect. I taught the hybrid model at the secondary level from October 8th to November 13th, and I can unequivocally state that despite the outstanding support of a very dedicated administration, support staff, and custodial staff, my colleagues and I struggled to meet the intellectual, social, and emotional needs of both our option-one and option-two students. Our local healthcare system is currently overwhelmed with COVID cases, and I do not trust that our buildings can safely open at this time. Tonight, I ask you to consider the reliability of the data that you are being asked to accept in making a decision about when to safely reopen our school buildings. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole Walcott Elston. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a high school registrar. I'm a 12-month essential employee, and I have been reporting to work in person to my school throughout this unprecedented pandemic. I love my job. I love my students. I love my school, and I love helping parents and families. It's my personal pleasure, and it brings me great joy and satisfaction. The district agreed by way of the 2021 reopening plan to keep students and staff safe. The powers that be call us vital and of great value to our students and families, yet these proposed changes scream to me that we are expendable and our health and safety and that of whom we go home to is unworthy of consideration and statistically insignificant. Yes, the data and information has changed, and it is perpetually changing, but so is this insidious virus. The new strain of COVID-19 is here in the U.S., and it is wildly more contagious and not fully understood. No one has access to adequate testing or vaccination. Social mitigation has been our only shield and recourse. What is being considered is not right. It is not safe for our children, our staff, and the families that we go home to. It is wrong to play Russian roulette with our lives or our livelihood. I'd like to know that if the powers that be are willing to trade places with those of us who will be at risk if this face-to-face plan is approved, will they come in and mingle with the students and staffs for nine more or more hours a day, five days a week? What is the value of our safety, our security, and our health? What are the long-term social and emotional risks to children who may become ill or who may lose a parent or a sibling to this virus? I don't want my husband to have to tell our children that mommy is sick or, God forbid, mommy has died because she loved her job and she went to work. We trusted and supported the reopening plan. Both my husband and my children were option-one, but we have switched to option-two because of the rapid rise in cases in our area. We would love them to be in face-to-face, but only when it's safe. We are the, we are their parents, and we lovingly accept the responsibility for their physical, emotional, and mental health and well-being. We, their parents, are their protection until they are old enough, and we will help them through this safely. Our commitment does not end during school hours when they are with teachers and staff. We do not turn over the responsibility of their mental health to the school district. We send them to school to be educated. It's my responsibility to keep them safe, mind, body, and soul. Who will protect them from me if I'm exposed and infected by one of the thousand-plus individuals that will flood our halls
Thirty seconds.
if this new plan is initiated? If it's you, please reply with your contact information so my next of kin will know who to direct my obituary to, along with our monthly bills and a lifetime of mourning, grief, devastation, and pain. My children will be shopping for funeral attire and not for ring dance attire. If that's okay with you, then please go ahead and vote to return us. If not,
And that is time.
and stick to the plan. If not, keep your word and stick to the plan. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Our next.
I'm done.
Our next speaker is Rachel Anthony. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Rachel Anthony, please unmute.
Let's go ahead.
Sorry. Um, my daughter is number 71. Is it okay for her to go before me or switch with me or something? She's 14. And it's a school day.
So you're switching? Sure.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so her name is Ally.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ally Anthony. I'm a freshman at Kellum High School. I don't think it's safe for teachers and students to go back face-to-face. Some students have issues learning online. For example, I have major anxiety problems with my schoolwork, and I still have managed to get straight A's doing virtual. There are less things students have to worry about when going virtual. Going face-to-face, the only reason students wanted to go was to socialize. But since there are four lunch periods and due to social distance rules, you don't get to interact with people. During Zoom call, there are breakout rooms, so students can interact with one another. So doing virtual class isn't taking away from students socializing. Going face-to-face isn't the same as before. It's entirely different. You're so far apart at lunch that when talking, you have to scream to talk to another person. But this doesn't just affect kids. It also affects the teachers and staff who have to work with a bunch of kids around and have a huge risk of getting COVID. There are already tons of teachers who have COVID, some for just being in the school without students there. Before schools were shut down, the number of COVID cases weren't as much as now. Now there are more cases than ever. Corona has not stopped, and it has not slowed down. If anything, it has sped up. It is still contagious, and it is still spreading. Masks may help some, but they aren't going to stop it entirely from people getting COVID. Even having less than 10 people, which is the recommended amount, doesn't stop Corona from spreading. If one person has it, all 10 could have it. But you're not talking about a small amount of people. You're talking about an entire school. After each class, kids will be touching the same desks, chairs, and tables. I went to school. I know kids aren't being safe. No one is using hand sanitizer, and no one is keeping six feet. Putting students who don't care about the virus and putting them with the teachers who have to be there, it's not fair. Teachers can teach from home, from their homes safely instead of at school with the risk of COVID. At first, I was super worried about school and upset I couldn't go back. But then, once I got back, it wasn't like before. Honestly, I much prefer school virtual. I get to wake up at a later time. I focus better. And when I'm done with my work, I can leave class early and focus on other work I have to finish. By opening schools, the amount of people exposed to the virus grows as kids are packed into a classroom and in a hallway. The risk isn't just for students and staff in the building. It also affects the families. After the hundreds of kids that have been around, they have to go to their kids and partners, even if they don't have it. It could be a carrier and pass the virus down to a family member. The constant switching between online and virtual classes could affect a student's ability to learn properly because they don't have a steady environment. Students who are having hard times understanding can always stay after class for help email and even go to tutoring. So think about this for a second. Is it more important to risk the health of everyone in the school for people to socialize? What's more important, socialization or being healthy? Hospitals are almost at max people. They aren't going to be able to fit too many more people, which means people aren't going to get the medical care they need. Opening up schools will increase the number of COVID cases. Where are the people going to go when hospitals are at max capacity? Which means they aren't going to get the medical care they need. So again, what's more important?
Thirty seconds.
Or making sure?
Yeah, 30 more seconds.
They're healthy and safe from the virus. Opening up schools is just putting everyone at risk. The sooner you open up schools, the sooner they are going to close. So I ask you, please, not to put everyone's well-being at a risk. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Holly Rodenas. Please unmute.
Welcome. Hi, my name is Holly Rodenas, and I'm a parent of a Virginia Beach student as well as a teacher in Chesapeake. My daughter worked really hard to get into the Visual and Performing Arts Academy, and we moved from Chesapeake, in part for her to be able to attend school here. She was thriving at school with such a positive peer group that built each other up and grew close as they honed their skills together. And last March, when we did not know how children would be affected by COVID-19, I was proud to be in a city that had one-to-one Chromebooks and the infrastructure to accommodate virtual learning. In the short term, I believe this would be, would be able to continue her instruction and return to the classroom without too much lapse in her education. However, it's been now been nine months since high school students have been face-to-face, and the virtual platform is not conducive to learning for many students, especially those with 504s and IEPs. Her teachers are wonderful, but there's no substitute for knowing a whole child in person. Teachers work so hard to make their classes engaging, but children who aren't athletes aren't afforded the same interaction with their peers, and performing arts students have really been neglected. Staying virtual has increased depression and isolation for my daughter, caused headaches, neck and back pains, sleeplessness, and a feeling of hopelessness that's heartbreaking. Her once-excellent GPA has suffered, and she fears a lack of college options because she doesn't learn well this way. She will not be able to compete with students from other systems who have remained open. She no longer trusts adults and position to make decisions because she knows if she builds her hope up, she'll just be crushed again. It's hard to paint a positive picture for her because we, as parents, have a similar feeling. Only one person under 19 has died from COVID in Virginia, but parents at various Virginia Beach schools are sharing stories of local teen suicides. The number is growing. This doesn't even include attempts and self-harm, which I don't have the data for. The mitigation has been more lethal to children than the virus has. Comparing depression and anxiety for teens before the shutdown and now is frankly offensive to me, and it shows a lack of empathy and professionalism. I'm a kindergarten teacher, a teacher at a private school in Chesapeake. I've been face-to-face since September. We follow health department guidelines. We wash our hands. We wear masks inside the building, and we sanitize throughout the day. We have been immensely successful. Our children are mentally thriving. They are healthy in body and mind. They are excited to come to school every day. We have not had one case of COVID being spread at my school. And when a child has come in contact in their community, they stay home until they're done quarantining, and they join us virtually. I know I have less risk from children than I do going to the grocery store. Please consider putting the children first, as it's the school board motto. Serving the politicized wishes of the VBEA does not put children first. Putting healthy children in quarantine who chose option one does not put them first. Not following IEPs and 504s as required by the law does not put children first. Please bring our children back and allow them their full educational experience that they need and they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.